Called today and said he was not going to be here, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you hear from him?
He's sitting over there.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and bring up, before we get started, we're going to have a quick addendum to the agenda tonight. Where did Gary go?
He's over.
Here we have Gary, don't go to call up real quick, so he can talk to us a little bit about the tree board. He had asked if he can make a few comments, so we said we'd let him come up here at the very beginning, so.
We did.
With that, we'll go ahead and start our workshop, and Gary, why don't you come on up? Not for a workshop, you sit down here.
Well, you have to wait till I find the paper, he got things out of order.
Fairly simple thing, just looking at the new summary of ordinance 616. And when we talked to Ty and, why did I keep forgetting our other attorney's name?
Allison?
Allison. We agreed to delete some of this. Number four, Article 212, 2.12.1, number four, where it says, "The board shall prepare, administer, and update a written plan for the care, preservation, pruning plan." Well, we don't do that, that's the Parks Department, so I'd like that deleted. On the next page, page two on Arbor Day, this is just kind of an aside. We pretty much decided to have future Arbor Day celebrations downstairs for again, because the weather's always windy. We've had so many instances where you have to tie things down that get blown away.
Right, it's always windy.
So, we're going to do, so that's just an aside. If you look on page six, under street, street tree spacing. Section six, at the bottom, section 10, 312. See that? It's kind of minutia, if you read it, it says, "Street trees may be planted from curbs or should be a minimum of three feet." And if you look at this planting application, it's something to look at in future days, but it's been getting these tree planting applications, and hardly any of them meets that agreement. It says they have to be planted two to eight foot from the curb, but if you read this, it says they need to be planted at least four foot from the curb. And if you don't do it, you're
Mine says three feet.
What?
From the curb. Are you still on page six, number two?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, it says it says You plant it at least four foot from the curb.
Well, on the first line, it says a minimum of three foot, and then the city encourages trees that will grow to be large in size, greater than 20 foot, to be planted at least four foot.
But like I say, it's a small thing, and I get hung up on small things. On this tree application, it says two to four foot. Something to talk about at a different point, I guess, because this is easy, I think it's easily modified.
And I think there are several versions of this, because I pulled a version that's off of the website. It's way different than how it's
Were you looking at the ordinance or the bylaws?
See, there's two things, we were looking at bylaws, this is the ordinance.
This is the ordinance, yeah, number 616.
That's what, we were looking at bylaws, sorry. The mayor and I thought it was bylaws.
Well, it's a picky thing, but I liked it. Right above that, number one, the last sentence says, "Or otherwise provided by the Kansas Extension Service in Kansas Forest," I think that's supposed to be Kansas Forest, Forest Service. I had, final note, I had under, on page seven, under utilities.
10, 3, 14?
Yeah, where it says, "No street trees other than those species anticipated to grow less than 20 feet, blah, 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 may be planted under or within 10 lateral feet of any overhead utility line, or over or within five lateral feet of any underground water, municipal water line, blah, blah, blah." I almost, I can't plant a street tree, because my water line's like four foot from the curb, so I can't plant it. So it's no longer a street tree, I don't know if I'm just wondering how many people have planted trees.
Is this referring to the new additions? Like up here on Central Park and that kind of stuff?
There are a lot of trees that are, like he said.
I don't know, it hasn't been a big deal, I've only gotten, since I've been president of the tree board, I don't know, four years, I guess, I've only got four of these, and only one met the
So, I don't know if Ty, so we turn that over to Jason, to Because I don't like to argue with citizens, but I'll see what it says.
And what Gary's talking about there, is we have a program where if you plant a street tree and it meets those guidelines, the city will reimburse, I think it's $50?
Up to 50.
Up to 50.
Per tree.
To encourage that. And so, that's the form that they fill out, and then it had the tree board, the tree board president actually going out and making sure it was correct and stuff. And so, so with Jason, our new enforcement officer, I felt that he could probably as easily or easily, much easier to do that than having Gary do that, or whoever the tree board president is, because like he says, you have to go out and tell people, "No, this doesn't meet the requirements," or something like that.
So, why don't we change this to say, under utilities, you could say that first and give them the website, but then couldn't you just say, refer to the officer in charge or something, ordinance 257, instead of putting all of that in and him trying to
Well, see, I'm not, that's not my daily work, it's, I'm turning that over, I've never run into that, but it is
But it seems like this shouldn't even be then something you guys would have to have here, if you're not over this, it should be the city's.
You know, we did this program years ago, and we don't have very much space from our sidewalk to the curb. And if you planted it three feet in, it would not look right, because it'd be still close to the sidewalk. And also, you have to think about, years later, as the tree gets bigger, it's going to push up against the sidewalk. And so, I think we really ought to consider that, because that could be an issue, and then people wouldn't be able to plant trees on their parking like that.
Yeah. Well, I didn't, I didn't mean to get pushed ahead of everybody, but I think that's something that needs to be looked, because I've had to turn down two or three people, and one of them actually said, "Well, I can't do that, Gary, because it's going to push my sidewalk up." And then if you read the Article 10, it says they're responsible for it, they planted a tree.
Yeah, okay, we'll look into that.
But the main thing is, I wanted to get that, that the board's going to prepare a plan. And then my last comment is, I saw Diane, as I was walking the other day, Guy mentioned something about the tree board not having a budget, and we spend a lot of money, I've never had a problem if I've given Ty a bill. Some days, we just, we, but if we wanted, if you guys think we ought to have a budget, we can discuss that at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, let me go first.
Thank you so much.
Did somebody get all this stuff down, do you want to change?
Yeah, I took it, but changes to the ordinance.
And it's going to come back before council, before it's accepted?
Right, since it's a change to ordinance, I propose an ordinance with the changes and work with public works, and present it to you all on the next workshop agenda.
Yeah, and then we could, that gives us time to look at the street tree, because that is a valid point, I, we get a little concerned when you get trees that are over utility, our own water line system, they can tear those up and sidewalk, so. Yep, so we'll talk about that in this section.
Well, and I was appalled when he told me that he was handling that. I'm telling you, I'm not the brightest thing at 6:00 AM in the morning, on a Saturday morning, but, and then I talked to the mayor earlier today, he hadn't heard it either, so he was kind of taken back. So, we have people to do that.
Yep. We got that taken care of, so, thank you. Okay, let's get back to our agenda, we'll start. First thing up is Law Kingdom, and is back here. Jeff is here, welcome back, it's always good to see you, and I look forward to seeing what you, what you have.
Well, it's been a little while.
Yeah.
Sorry it's been so long. It seems like it's been longer than two months. Brought some things in, initial stuff is kind of what we were thinking about as we started working on the park layout. And if you remember, going through the public engagement process, the things that we were hearing from the community for what they were looking for from the park, really revolved around creating a gathering place. So, this is really, sets the groundwork for what we're proposing to do there, just adjacent to City Hall, is really creating a space that's going to facilitate a lot of different activities that are being programmed, either through community groups, the city, schools, whoever. But really activating that space for the community, and giving them kind of that special place in the town. Now, initially, that may start off small, and we talked a little bit about that last time, maybe we start out just, you know, just start doing, you know, events across the street, or even maybe over here, and get people used to coming to the community events kind of in this area. And then as time unfolds, and you know, finances come around, you know, we can start building on that. So, really, that's starting to set the stage for kind of what we're looking at. Now, I'm going to show you two conceptual plans, now, the idea isn't to pick one or the other tonight, really, we're just going to kind of explore both, see what things we like about and what we don't. Looking at this property, it's about 24 acres, obviously, we're not going to use 24 acres for the park. Initially, we talked about four or five, it's actually grown a little bit, but that's also some other things, not just quote unquote "park ground." There's some drainage things that we're going to be taking care of over there as well. I had to lay this out in both scenarios, kind of taking into account where we think development may occur around it. We don't know what that development necessarily looks like, so we're trying to build as much flexibility into that development as it occurs, thinking that the park is really kind of an anchor point for the overall development that may occur around it, and then they both feed off of one another in time. So, I'm going to open up both plans, because I'll probably, what I'll end up doing is I'll be hopping back and forth between them a little bit. There's not a tremendous amount of detail on here, again, that's on purpose, just because we didn't want to drill down into anything too specific yet. Mostly, the two plans that you're going to see really are fundamentally the same, in that they have the same program and the same elements. Now, how they go about getting there is a little different in the form, but you're going to start seeing that both have the same things. The common elements of the parks, obviously, was an open pavilion, which could be used for event space, rental, concert, it's kind of a catch-all, really. There may or may not be restroom facilities with that, we don't know that yet.
So, I was going to interrupt you here, do you have an extra copy?
I actually have.
I was going to ask, we actually, two members of our community development committee are going to come up in a little bit.
Uh-huh.
We're kind of working, what?
Only one.
There's two, there's two.
I know, but I only invited one.
Well, I'm going to bring both though, so, let's let, if you can hand a copy back there so they can see it.
Well, in that case, I'm going to have to, actually, I'm going to probably have to steal one right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, just, well, if not, I just thought that way.
We can share that one. Guy?
Figure out a way to
We, we
I should actually have a copy of every item.
Share this one, we just shared this one.
Okay.
Now, we will have one for Guy, too.
So, looking at both plans, you'll start noticing the similarities in that the elements are the same, that pavilion that we talked about, that open pavilion. Now, where it's located in relationship to the overall park varies. A fountain, a pop jet, or splash pad fountain is common in both, walking paths are common in both, detention pond is common in both, that's going to be a function of just necessity more than anything, but we also are going to obviously use that as amenities as well. Connection across, parking adjacent to, and a large lawn space, that big, that big event space, if you will, that's relatively unprogrammed, which can accommodate a lot of those festivals that we're talking about and those events. So, looking at Plan One, notice that the, oh, and the other part that I should say is, when we looked at this overall property, recognizing, I'm going to steal somebody's pen, is this yours?
I'm
Good, because I have to have a pen in my hand to talk, definitely. We looked at the property that would be most marketable for development, normally, that's going to be out towards those arterial streets. So, that leaves that interior portion of the ground as the least probably commercially viable, which works out great for a park, because it's the best piece of ground for us in developing this. And again, then the park really becomes that hub, or that, you know, an anchor inside of it. So, looking at number one, this one takes the pavilion, and you'll start seeing an access from the City Hall down here in the left-hand corner, down here, if I was taller, I could almost reach it. We set this up so high. Or am I that short?
Well, usually, we're back there these benches, so.
Obviously, an access that goes up to the north and the east, that we're, you can kind of, you obviously can see that going through there, so as you look out through City Hall, you're going to see this transition spaces as you go up to the north and the east, starting across the street with that fountain, parking lot, the elliptical lawn, and then finally, the pavilion up in the, towards the center of the overall development. Really, option one puts that pavilion really almost dead center of the entire development, creating that, that lawn, again, kind of towards the north and east, which is based around that ellipse. The thinking here would be that if you wanted to start with a phase one development, it would be just that half circle of parking right off of the main drive, opposite of City Hall. There, and put the fountain in when you could, but you could also start using that space for market in the meantime, and getting things kind of rolling right there. As time unfolds, whether that be with the park or adjacent development, then you can kind of stretch out with the pathwork, at some point, you would build the detention pond that would facilitate basically communal detention for the whole development, and then, of course, the pavilion at the end. Overall, again, about 24 acres, so public, I'll say park slash public space, I treated the access road to the north as public, not private, and of course, the detention pond is public space as well. It's about 10 acres of the 24, so you have about 14 acres of developable ground within this one. Parcel one and parcel six, which are probably the least marketable, because they're off the arterials, one of those two may make a good place for event center that we talked about. I don't know if that's going to be necessarily a public facility that the city would build, or maybe it's a private developer that may do an event center, but that was something that the community did say that they were interested in having at some point in time. Either one of those two would also work pretty well for office, and then, of course, the other ones kind of market dictated as it goes. So, the second one. Again. Uh-huh, anytime.
So, if we have this parking here, a little bit over here, and you have 10 acres, and we have an event, that would be a long way for us to keep it to walk.
If you, yeah, without the other access road connecting through on the, to the north and the east, you're right, it's actually about 500 feet from point to point on that ellipse, it's a big space.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, if we want to have our event thing over here, I mean, because this one, I see there is more parking, I'm just thinking it's a long way for seniors to walk.
That's a good point, keep that in mind as we move to the next one.
Yeah.
Because we'll come back and we'll kind of balance that out, because you're right, because the other one actually, does actually create parking maybe a little bit more adjacent around the park, whereas the elliptical one kind of pulls it to the ends.
Can I ask a question? When did we decide for sure to do this right in front of City Hall?
Years ago.
I mean, this latest round of talking about this, because I thought we were considering the location over there by the high school, too.
Yes, and that's what we were, and it was two workshops ago. The council wanted to focus on this one, rather than immediately add the 12 acres
By the high school.
I don't remember that.
Yeah. Because that's what Jeff
You were talking about a couple of
I don't know if you were here.
I don't remember if you were here or not.
Yeah.
That would have been two work, it wasn't last workshop, the workshop before.
In June. Okay, moving on, the second one still has that same access stemming up to the north and the east, obviously, it's a bit more rectangular, at least on two sides of it. Again, parcel development around the sides, an access road similar, but a little bit different. Changes position of the pavilion, more central to the overall development, so the lawn spaces, in front of it being long and narrow, if you will, actually becomes very wide and less deep. Same elements, though, fountain, and some of the idea is, is to make that connection back to City Hall. That area, when, when we actually were working on it years ago, was master planned for kind of a formal little plaza space that actually made a connection across, some of the ideas there that it could become kind of city memorial for whatever, you know, I, the other day, I was joking with Ty, maybe there's a bust in Ty there after a while or something, but, and then making that connection across. Again, on this one, you're probably looking at a phase one development that's closer to the, sort of the street and City Hall, and then stemming, or going kind of to the north and the east from that point on. Going back to your point about parking and access, this one probably does provide a bit more adjacent parking around the entire space as it develops, or eventually, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, people come into things, and my husband couldn't walk probably that long, but he could this one. And on this one, I like, I like the pavilion there.
On number two?
Uh-huh. But, I wonder if we could put the playground on the other side closer, so like, if I'm there at a concert, I could just walk over and let my granddaughter play a little bit, and then come back and not have to walk through a parking lot. You see what I'm saying? I love that playground concept, but I wonder if you had it inside, then it wouldn't be
Oh, opposite, kind of like a mirror image of the fountain.
Well, you would never have to walk across cars if you put, I love the playground idea, because if you're there at a concert, a family night, like I saw in that picture of like Wolfstock mural out there, if you had a playground inside where you wouldn't have to walk your grandkids across a lot, then, I don't know, I think that would be safer. I'm just thinking of logistics of walking if it's over there.
Sure, well, the other part of that is it could become the mirror image of the fountain on the one end.
Yeah, I knew you wanted that. That's what I'm saying, because you put a fountain on the other end to match it as you came in from both sides, or not.
Well, you know, I do agree with you, and I kind of did struggle a little bit with putting the playground on the other side of the parking. So, I do like the idea of actually pulling it back interior to the park itself, or the more contiguous space. It's a nice mirror of the fountain at the other end, having a playground on one end and a fountain at the other. This space, again, we don't know, this parcel three, that may become totally developable space, too, that, that kind of notch in there doesn't even necessarily have to exist, and maybe it's better that it doesn't even exist as park ground, maybe, maybe it's better that that isn't, you know, is developed ground.
Thinking little shops like, you know, like little food eateries, like a coffee shop
I would imagine what you're probably looking at is
Hard if he has food trucks.
Is, is you're probably going to have mostly community type of retail eateries. I mean, the nationals are probably, a little bit of a strategy, may get one or two after a while.
That's what I think.
Probably standalone, but most of your multi-tenant will be more localized.
Which is great.
Yeah, the food truck idea, I mean, that would be, you know, on kind of a midday or midnight, that wouldn't be a constant thing, they'd move around quite a bit, or they've got quite a little.
My cousin owns one and moves, yeah, they move together in groups.
So, anyone else have any feelings about one or two, or what they don't like, what they do like?
Well, I like both of these, but I think we need to get a lot more public input on this before, I don't know how much money this would cost, do you have some figures?
No, I usually don't, I haven't put any estimate numbers on this yet, I wanted to kind of get a, get it in front of you all, get a little bit firmer direction, and then we start putting numbers on it.
Well, we're trying to still get our debt down and improve our roads, which is what the community survey really said that's what people are most interested in here in Bel Air. I would want to get a lot more community input on this, because we've really had very poor attendance at that open house, very few people came. And, and I love the idea, I think these are beautiful, but I wouldn't want to make any commitments or go, you know, spend a lot more money on this until we hear more from the community. Is this what Bel Air people really want right now? I think this is our dream, we've always had, you know, but whether we do this in the near future or not, depends on how the public wants to spend the money.
You bet.
Yeah, that's what we were talking, I was talking to Jeff about, is, you know, when you start putting numbers to it, also phases, because we had been talking that, you know, there's no way we could do this whole thing, and honestly, the retention pond's got to be there when you get development, that's how your retention pond is sized, the location and everything. But if we wanted to start utilizing something across from City Hall, maybe phase one would just be that little parking area, and then we could start maintaining some grass there and start having some events just there, farmer's market, you know, those types of things, so we at least have some parking, maybe that's phase one, and I don't know what phase one costs, but that we could then, Jeff, put numbers together for like potential phasing, and then go to the community and say, is this something, would you like to see something like this? Would you like to see phase one move forward, have some estimates and stuff?
Yeah, I'd really like to do that personally, because I just think we need to be responsive and responsible to our citizens here in the city that are paying all these taxes and wanting their roads done.
One of the questions that I have, I like the phasing idea. You know, I had mentioned the Andover, and they've been doing that one, you know, big festival kind of thing.
Yes, I have.
For like five years, and are planning finally a pavilion, a big sort of pavilion.
Yeah, we actually designed it, we're building that right now, so.
I haven't seen that part, they just announced it at the, you know.
But they, yeah, it took a while to get there.
And, you know, and a lot of their financing has been done through sponsorships and various things like that, kind of thing. So, you know, we're certainly not there yet, but I just don't want to see it all just get, it's pretty on paper, but by the time we get done, it doesn't look anything like this at all, type thing. And then, question in my mind, is parking, okay, because the parking in Andover is horrible. Sorry, but it, it is, maybe it'll be better when
No, it won't be any better, we didn't, we didn't, they didn't provide any more parking than for those, it's a 10,000, you know, person event, they're not going to build parking for 10,000 people.
For 10,000 people, nor do we have to, but, I mean, I see the little lines and whatever, but I can't keep track long enough to get them counted, do you have some idea?
I'll tell you, on the, once we finalize this, we'll, we'll give you some final numbers on, on parking, again, on a major event, on a green space like this, you will not provide, we will not provide that number of parking stalls. To give everyone that comes there a parking space, because it just wouldn't be feasible financially. What you do is you, realistically, you'll want to build parking for, just over daily, you know, and I mean, having daily use of the area, but major events, you won't build a parking for that. People will be parking in the streets, looking for neighbors and.
Or full shuttle.
And that's how every, everyone is worse.
They shuttle in some cities, I've learned to name, they shuttle from areas and take, because no one has that much.
You just don't. You don't build for those types of.
We even do that at our hot dog parking.
Yeah, you just don't do it. Malls do it, but that's about it.
It's all.
And then, you know, it's open parking, you know.
We've got the, right across the street, we've got the northeast magnet.
That's right.
So that would be.
So, yeah, you could shuttle.
You could shuttle.
And depending upon the events, the timing, when development does occur, there is going to be parking associated with that development. Agreements may be made, you know, shared use parking as well for some of those lots.
Well, I remember when we were talking and talking years ago, and we keep putting this back, and, you know, when we said we're going to bite the bullet and start the commerce park, and it really took off. And I think we need to do, like you said, in phases, but we're never going to get the farmer's market that people keep saying we want. And we're never going to get to have a night to come out and have a city thing and watch the movies and everything, if you have nowhere to put the people. So if you just say, okay, we're just going to do phase one and be responsible with your tax dollars, and then as we grow, but community things get people excited.
And I think that's the main thing for all of us to keep in mind here is, you know, we're talking, we're going to hear about the, you know, the master growth plan here in a little bit, too. That, you know, the park concept is something we've been talking about for several months now, and with this space developing, you guys might remember when I came back, was that early June, you gave, you know, that report? All about, yeah, the gathering spaces are a main thing that retailers are looking at right now, too. To, as one of the things, because they kind of put points on the board to see if they're going to bring their establishment into an area. We've talked about having this gathering spot, so, yeah. And I guess I'm saying this for anyone, you know, listening at home, this is not something, this whole thing is not being built tomorrow. This is a long-term thing we're looking at, but just putting our, you know, putting our best foot forward, starting out exactly like what Peggy just said. This is, you know, what we need so that we have that event space, so that we have that space, so that we come up with more ideas and gathering spots and, you know. And, and all that's just going to, you know, growth begets growth type thing, so. Totally just lost my thought on what I was going to say, but, again, just having that gathering spot in phases, and again, you know, this is land that has been for sale for more than a decade. So to finally see something that can be done on it, you know, I don't think we've had one offer, one sniff, one even look at that, these, you know, few acres in that 10 years, so. I'm glad to see this, see where we are here.
And I think it's a smart idea to start with a smaller phase one closer to, to City Hall. And see how the market comes around for purchase of parcels and how they may want to develop, and keep some flexibility, you know, going, because you just don't. We try to plan for it, but we don't know what's going to happen, so. Knowing that, you know, the area that's close to City Hall is probably the least desirable for most commercial development, but, you know, who knows, as that pushes to the north and the east, maybe someone does want a little more ground up there. And you have to make a little bit of an adjustment to the park land in the future, so be it.
And a blocking picture third, and that's a hard corner. That can be very desirable, especially if you've got that natural gathering spot there, so. That, and that answer, you and I started talking the exact same time there. Did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to ask Peggy, she made the comment that we'd never have a farmer's market. Because that's what they voted on when we had this town hall meeting. I mean, there was more stickers on it than anything.
Right, but where are we going to ever have it if we don't have a place? I mean, would, would you put it in the lot next to the pizza place?
No, I'd put it right across the road until this stuff comes available, and then where the park, the park and public space is, that's 10 acres.
No, I agree. I want to put it across the thing. That's what I said. To do this, I think we need to start phase one in order to do, I don't know, you didn't see what he said.
Well, to start it, it'd be probably a small thing, but there's a, a partial six at point, 1.45 acres, four or five acres. And then over there, on the sides, each side of the fountain, and there's available parking around that, and then they could flow over into the park and the public space for 10 acres.
And I, I.
And I know we're not going to have maybe four or five.
Maybe explain myself. You're saying what I said.
Maybe to start, but it can build.
I agree, yeah.
But would we even have to wait for this to do a farmer's market? Why couldn't we just use our parking lot we have right now? I've seen, I've seen farmer's markets in smaller places.
Well. We're not here to say we're not doing one until this is built. We're saying this would be a great, you know.
Get tables.
Get, get that snowball rolling.
Yeah, I think the more, the quicker you can get something started, because it's going to start small.
Yeah, because it'll spread word of mouth.
And then let it, you know, get people used to coming, used to coming.
Exactly.
Put more vendors, more vendors, and then, and maybe it's in a year or two, I don't know, then you build phase one, then you've already got some, some critical maps that you can start moving over.
People would have more of a vision of what was possible.
So anything you start now, yeah, I would do it right here.
That's what I think.
Okay, sorry, I might have misunderstood what you're saying.
Oh, that's okay.
I think we're all talking about using the space for the same thing, and having it just starting, we're, we're starting from zero right now. And this is where we want to get to eventually, so.
And we don't want to duplicate anything that, I think we have two public schools that promised us a bunch of stuff, like ball fields and volleyball and badminton and, I can't remember the other fields. But if we get to the school board and tell them, you know, you promised this to the Bel Air citizens, and they're paying taxes on those two schools. Hopefully, they can do quite a bit of the, I think back here, the fields wherever it was, I think I saw somebody planning.
Yeah, Betty, I was telling you here, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, Dr. Beck and I are planning to go have that conversation and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah. Definitely, because all of our taxpayers here are paying USD 259 taxes. And we really got cheated out of our two schools that we were promised when we all voted for that bond issue many years ago. So I think we need to go back and really work on getting all of our students to be able to go to school right here in Bel Air. All of our residents that live here, if they want to send their children to our own public schools, we should have that option. And if we had that, it would make such a difference in selling homes here, because the first thing people ask you when they are looking at a house is, where will my kids go to school? And the closer to home it is, the better. So I think that's one of our first priorities we really need to work on now.
Yeah, I went to those meetings back when they were doing it, and I met with, well, then it was Allison, he's gone now, and so was Mike Elbit. He said they had to build it because to get that bond money, but he said it's going to be a long time. I think you were with me, Ty, or somebody. He said it's going to be a long time before we will make that a school that's not a magnet school.
Well, that was after the disaster in the state budget.
No, it was prior.
Otherwise, we would have, no, otherwise we would have had those schools. They had to change those to magnets because of the tax experiment.
Before, but, yeah, I'm just saying, I think it's a great idea. Go talk to the new superintendent.
Let's see if we can make that happen.
Right. I am game to do that.
Go do it.
Getting excited about it.
Because they also promised us a building for the rec center, and we can keep the rec center that we had and still have rec center for here, correct?
Yeah, we were going to try to work on a deal that would utilize their facilities.
You've got a good memory, Betty.
Well, we could use their, I went to those, those, whatever they were, the school board, when they came out here, and I was very disappointed, because a lot of parents with, with young children. And here I am, 73 years old, and I'm, at that time, probably 70, sitting at these meetings, I don't have any kids in school. But I'm frightened, frightened like the devil for them to get these kids in Bel Air to be able to go to those schools. But what do we have now, 30%?
Yes.
That can go there from Bel Air?
Oh, they've got about 30, last I heard, about 30%.
And like I said, yeah, and we'll have that conversation, just to give everybody a quick update, I, when was that? July, I checked in, and you and I.
Yeah, three or four weeks ago.
Yeah, and it'll probably going to happen September-ish, we'll have a sit-down, but they said that they would, and we'll find out some of those things, so.
Well, it would improve everybody's property value in the whole city.
Right.
You know, because you could sell your house easier, we could sell land easier, it would just make a huge difference. I think that's one of our most critical projects.
But I think right now we need to, you know, what do they say, prepare for the worst, plan for the worst, hope for the best?
Sorry, Jeff, we got off track.
Yeah, so let's get back to talk about, let's talk about our new park here.
If we had our own school, we could afford this.
We can't have parks.
Yeah, let's get back to parks, because whether that ever happens or doesn't, we've got this, so.
Let me ask you, my next step normally would be to kind of take these plans, revise it into a single preferred plan, bring it back, would you see it? And at that point, I'd have some numbers with that, give you some ideas of numbers, also phasing. Do you want some public engagement before that or after that? How would you like to proceed with that?
How much money are we talking about?
For what?
More planning.
Well, the public engagement, I mean, we're talking about either putting it, you know, on social media, you know, and asking the public what their opinion is.
No, I'm talking about if you do further work on plans.
Oh, no, I'm already on the hook for that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm going to give you a fine, I mean, I have to work through this to, for a final plan that you, you all feel good about.
So you're suggesting maybe we, we share both of these plans publicly, through social media, let people see, or do you want to?
They both achieve, I mean, they both achieve the same thing in two different ways of doing it. So, I don't, I don't know if I have necessarily a problem sharing that and asking the public what their feelings are about it. Again, they aren't drastically, they look different.
Right.
But they're not really fundamentally different. Both work, both will need to be tweaked, and both will probably change in the future, as all master plans do, but, and that's entirely up to you. Or I come back with a, what I would consider to be a final kind of hybrid plan, if you will.
I'd like to do that, and then let's get some people to get opinions of it, tweak this number two a little. And, and can you put it like lines, like phase one, phase two?
Sure, sure, sure.
Phase three, phase four?
Oh, yeah.
And so then the people can see.
And I can put numbers on each phase, so you can have a basic idea how each phase would be.
Well, I think that would be real helpful for the public to see, this is phase one, this is phase two, this is phase three, this is phase four.
And that's something that'll be.
And then bring it to us, and let's have public input. And I'm with these guys, I don't think we'd want to start until we make sure the public's behind this.
Yeah, I think.
And I think they will be.
I think the public would probably like to have a rough idea of how much it was going to cost, too.
I can bring cost with it, I can change, yeah.
Right, so we've got the four S, are you kind of wanting to know which way we like plan one or plan two?
Well, it would help me if I knew the basically which direction one or two, I mean, we've talked about two with a little bit of a change with the playground here.
Right.
But I haven't heard a lot of discussion about.
To me.
I mean, I need it, nobody thinks.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I'll just, well, let's just go around the horn here, so, to me, I think two looks a lot cleaner. But on one, I like, I like a lot of one, two, with the bigger pond. You're talking half an acre more of a pond. I, I like the, the trees around the patio there and the plaza, and, I mean. I, I can go for either one of these. I mean, I guess, I guess I kind of like one, but with maybe the, the square instead of the oval. Because that's, that's what's drawing me to number two, is, is that square.
Okay.
Yeah, this is my opinion, and I'm just a one of six here. You know, you know, I thought plan one allowed for, it looks like, looks like maybe some more trees and funky, but, but I don't know, there's something about that square in the middle. That could somehow be replace the oval on plan one, yeah.
Plant trees in two.
That, that, that's my.
Just plant trees here and here.
So I really didn't give you an answer, did I?
Yeah, you did. You said take this.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
Well, what do you say, Betty?
I, I really like the concept as is, the plan one. It's, it's cozier looking at. It's not strung out to where, this one looks like too much open space. Now, I know you're going to fill in with stuff, but, but I think, I, I really still like, because the fountain would be attractive closer to the building. And I know this has got a fountain, but it's all.
Let's talk about that in particular, because we, we realize that that's probably going to be our phase one, because that area is closest to City Hall. And that, that area there is pretty different between plan one and plan two. Obviously, fundamentally, it's because one's, you know, more curvilinear, one's rectilinear in, in design, but plan one does have that fountain closer. And it puts the parking on the, between the fountain and the open space, or the rest of the park.
The other thing I liked about plan one, too, was the, the bridge over part of the, the pond.
I like that, too.
I, I really liked that idea.
That is great.
Well, I was going to ask them if you could put a bridge over this, too.
It can be done. I, trust me, most of this is pretty interchangeable. And then going back to that fountain, plan two, then, obviously, you've got parking kind of between, you know, City Hall and the fountain. So there may be a bit more of a disconnect between the fountain and City Hall, maybe less of a space. However, the fountain is more a part of the overall contiguous park area, while part, or plan one is kind of like a park into, unto itself, almost within that parking lot, and then you have the open space. Not saying one's better or worse than the other, just kind of going through that.
So would plan one have a playground? Because I really like that idea.
You know, I didn't have one in there, but we do have, we definitely have space for playground, if we wanted, and that's one question, another fundamental question.
There's a non-parcel three, there's parking over there.
Do we want a playground in this? Because we do have a new playground right up the street.
Oh, that's true.
See, and they've been building that up. They just refurbished the ground and things.
I bring that up because we talked a little bit about playground equipment. I like, I like larger playgrounds, more equipment, has a bigger draw factor than a lot of little ones kind of spotted around.
Well, I think playground definitely would not be phase one or two, especially with the new one coming in, so we can have that conversation sorted out.
What's your choice, Diane?
I like number one. And it's coming for really, I'm, I'm looking at it with way different eyes probably than some of you. I do like the squared off road here as opposed to it being such a curve and what have you.
Yes.
But other than that, I wouldn't make too many choice changes to that. But I'm also looking at what y'all goes to hell in a handbasket. I'm seeing land that's not been piecemealed or what have you, and acreages enough so that it could be replanted and, you know, things like that. And that's kind of my way of looking at ground is, what can I do with it right now, but if that all goes south, you know, what can I do with it after that? So I think one would be easier to work with, even on that. Or it may have a little bit more draw, you know, I've got no crystal ball either, a little more draw for if development starts. You know, Rock Road may be the hotspot, that parcel four at 53rd and Rock may be a hotspot. And whoever comes to me with the money first and has a good story is not going to be, you know, something that we don't want. They can have it.
I actually agree with you when I put these two together. I actually agree with you when I put these two together and I started looking at them. The drive that connects through, uh, on Plan Two, connecting Rock over to Fifty Third is, is better, it's stronger. Uh, it makes a lot more sense, it's easier to parcel, uh, for development, it gives us a nice end point. The curved road in Par, in Plan One makes development a little more challenging because of the tight curves. So I think you're absolutely spot on, could I?
And that's kind of what I was talking about, too, if you do the square with that, with the roads, and that would also then bring parking closer to other parks.
It would, it would then start-
Which I think was one of your concerns, too, right?
It would start snugging parking up.
But, yeah, I like One with, with that, with those changes.
I think that's probably, like I said, it's probably gonna be hybrid of the two somehow.
Yeah, 'cause you've got two exits to Fifty Third, yeah.
Well, I like the oval part from the fountain over to the plaza or whatever that is, patio, I guess.
I'd be lying if I said it.
I think that makes it look unique.
It is unique, it's less traditional and town square-ish, but it still has a strong form.
Well, that's why I like Number One aesthetically, Number One is more beautiful, you know? And that's the way people are doing nice developments now. You don't have very many straight lines anymore, 'cause we've had that grid system for so long, you know, people are kind of getting away from that. But, uh, Number Two looks like it has a lot more parking spaces. And I like, is this pavers going across the road here? I like those pavers going up to City Hall, that's a nice, um, aspect of Number Two. I could live with either one of them, I think they're both beautiful, but if we did Number Two, I would want a ridge across the pond.
Me, too.
That would be fun. And as far as the playground, I would, you know, I was thinking we would, uh, have a very likely possibility of doing the, uh, park over there by the high school. And it would be really nice to have a nice playground over in that area, because of all the housing there for, for families, we really need a park closer over there for both the housing on the south side of the road and the housing on the north side of the road by the high school. That, that's something I'd really like to think about in the future.
And I think that's even what kind of the public can mention through that. And, and that's something we talked about before, too, that would be very appropriate to do, a bigger playground over there.
I have a question to tie. Uh, way back when I was part of the Community Development Committee, um, Rick had, we kept getting the, uh, what's it called? Play City USA, and there were several times when there were some, uh, equipment that came with that. Where is that equipment?
Yes, um, well, the, uh, and we're still a member of that, I mean, we've still got that designation, and there are grants you can apply.
Uh-huh.
And so that was kind of where the idea of our master park plan came up, was because we've got those, there's grants available through there, and then Lions Club wants to assist with putting in new park equipment. So that was kind of where we were working with our park master plan, and originally the thought was maybe determining that it was over there across from the high school. And that's kind of where we were heading, and then a couple months ago, when we came, you know, council was talking about, well, you know, gathering place versus park, and, and that's where we kind of came up with, well, this is really the true gathering place. But over there would be the place for a neighborhood, large neighborhood park, dog park, some of that stuff. And so, um, so it's, it's, money's there, and that's where, where we were hoping to go with the master plan, is so that we could have something to go, you know, they wanna know where you're gonna put it, what your plan is and stuff like that. So, um, so, yeah, that's all money available, and that's where we were gonna go to try to get some of the funding to put in playground equipment.
Well, if I remember right, some of it wasn't playground equipment, it was more, uh, something that could be installed in a park for you. If you're out walking, you can do pull-ups and, you know-
Yeah, there was fitness equipment, too, yeah.
'Cause-
Well, didn't they at one time replace the, uh, flooring over at the Bel Air Park? Or they gave us money to help us replace it?
Uh, no, that, that grant, we got a grant for that porn place up here at the Park Central Park, that's been done this year. And then the one at, um, uh, Bel Air Park was done five years ago, seven years ago, something like that. So, um, so, yeah, when we, when we get a plan put together, we can then go, like this one, maybe it's walking paths and stuff, then we can go start applying for grants and show if this is what we're looking at, and, you know, um, the fountain, different things like that.
Yeah, and if you have folks in the community that are so inclined to assist and-
Um, I will tell you also that with both of these, we had, fortunately we borrowed on Jerry Jones, and so we had him actually meet with us before, um, Jeff put these together, because again, not, we're not developers, and, and we needed to know, and Jeff wanted to know, okay, you know, this is what we're thinking, gathering place across from City Hall, are those prime lots that we're gonna wanna sell? Or where are the lots? And, and he was the one that actually helped us create what he thought would be appropriate for commercial growth, based on what he did at New Market Square and things like that, so.
I was gonna ask you if you had talked to him.
Yeah, 'cause that, we were all very nervous about how this laid that out, and, and so a couple weeks ago or so, he actually-
Yeah, we initially met a couple weeks ago, then actually met Jerry yesterday. I've known Jerry for a long time, worked with him for a long time, so.
So, yeah, we wanted his input immensely to know how these out parcels-
Again, I think those out parcels, yeah, you're right, you wanna keep them as flexible as possible in how they may be broken apart, split, and so, whatever.
But he did, I will say that he did really like this idea, because that's what he's saying, is they, you know, you got a community gathering place, businesses like to locate around that.
Did he have a preference as to One or Two on these plans?
Well, I started with One, Two came, kind of fell out of the discussion with him. And I think that his point to Two really was, had to do with parking, being close to or adjacent, having a lot of parking adjacent to or close to that public space. Uh, he liked One a lot, too, it, I don't know if it necessarily, this or that one, it's just another look at it, but that's the one thing he did put into, or he interjected and said, you know, you don't want it dead areas or anything like that, so, which I, I totally agree. Again, I think that it becomes a hybrid of Plan Two, you know, we'll see where that is next time, have some numbers and some phasing. And, I mean, Marlon and Jerry both see this before it comes back to.
Do you have what you needed?
I think so.
All right.
See you in about a month, then, again.
All right, thank you.
Now, we should talk about the Community Master Growth Plan, huh?
Yes.
I warmed him up for you, Scott.
Yeah, warmed him up.
Yeah.
Are you gonna need the PowerPoint, Scott?
Okay. At least so I can see it. All right. So, um, this, uh, talk about a little background first, because, um, it's been a while since, uh, it's been a little over a year since you approved my contract to start working on this, but, uh, we kind of went on hiatus for a little while, 'cause we, the community survey was out, and then it was, you know, we had to wait for the results to get back, so we, um, we picked it up, uh, well, what about, uh, January or, or February, we started back up and, um, and started, uh, working on it again. And then, uh, you know, we had the, uh, community, uh, what'd you call the, uh, it was our work, the Community Workshop, the Planning, Planning Our Future workshop. And I, I know I spoke with several of you at that workshop about, you know, the progress on the plans and whatnot. So, um, it's, you know, it's been a work in progress, and, uh, it's just taken some time since we had to take a little bit of hiatus for the, um, survey to get done, so. Little bit of background, so the, the purpose, obviously, was to create a long, uh, long-term land use plan, which, by the way, the plan goes out to twenty thirty-five, so, uh, you know, approximately twenty years. I even, our odd number, you gotta have it at a zero or a five, or else it just seems like an odd number to have a plan for. So, uh, it's twenty thirty-five, and, um, the point of the plan was to identify the right locations for the different types of development that will occur over time. Also to take a look at, um, development standards that would help maintain the character of the community. And then implementation strategies and different recommendations that would also, um, you know, help, help to maintain that character, and how do you actually accomplish the plan, um, once it's, once it's complete. So, uh, I always try to brand the plans that we do, so it's, it creates a lasting image and impression on people. And, starting with the title, um, we came up with the title of Progress with Principles, because it, it ties to the city motto, a city of the future with respects for its past. Um, the, what we're trying to do is make a good path toward the future, but, as we said, maintain the character. And so those principles that were, so the principles are ingrained in the plan, so that we can maintain the community character as growth occurs. So not only does the message carry through with the title, but with the rest of the branding, we've tried to bring through visually, um, the elements. If you notice, there's, there's a lot of the, the wave shapes, um, and, and complementary colors with the, with the city logo, um, as, as well as, um, a few contrasting colors that, that play, play well with it. So it's recurrent themes to kind of visually reinforce, um, the importance and, and the message of the plan. And if you'll take a look, just to kind of see how that looks, the color looks a little odd on the, on the screen, it's a little off from my print, but- Every monitor does that, so, um, so that the covers, you, you can see the waves, um, coming through, and then there's wave patterns in the background, and there's visual images of, these are all actual, um, the, the pictures are from Bel Air, they're, they're not just canned pictures. And, um, the other images are, are, you know, landmarks or, um, architectural features in the community. So, um, and what we're trying to do is, once again, with this, um, just reinforce the community, um, character, and, um, identify through the master plan that, that's really key, is maintaining the character while, while being able to accommodate growth, um, for the community, so. Wanted to talk about the land use definition, 'cause we'll talk a lot about land uses as we go through this. So I wanted to make sure you understood, 'cause you can categorize land uses at a high level, or you can give final level of detail. For future land use planning, you keep it at a very, fairly high level, so I wanted to kind of cover with you how I congregated the uses. Of course, parks and open space, keep in mind, when you look at the maps, um, drainage channels and retention ponds and whatnot are shown as open space, because they really function as, as an open space, because they don't get developed. There's something that, you know, you, you keep the develop, development off of, it's a nice pleasing, um, aspect. So, we, we tend to categorize those with the parks and open space. And then there's also, of course, your, you know, parks and other recreational facilities. And when we get to the, the different plan options, you'll notice we actually accounted for the two parks that Jeff has been working on, into the land use plan. So, just to kind of cover it really quickly, residential suburban density is single-family homes, your traditional neighborhood, just like we have here. Residential medium density are smaller lot residents, it could be a mix of one family or two-family homes, but it's a little smaller, a little more of an urban density development. Um, and if you think about some of the newer development, you're either gather my bearings, um, over this direction, that would be more of the medium density, um, development. And then there's residential multifamily development, obviously those are, you know, anything with more than two units in the building is multifamily. And one thing to, um, note, too, that a lot of times what you'll see, and, and I, I've started to refer to duplexes and townhomes, and, and maybe this is due to my wife making me watch HD TV and whatnot, but I've started calling it single-family attached, because really, these are, you know, they're just attached homes, they're, that just happen to be connected to one another. And, um, I, I like that better than duplexes, because duplexes, they seem, because, uh, frequently, you know, because they're often investment properties or rental properties, they seem to get a negative connotation, so I've tried to pull away from that, because it's, the way the, um, real estate market has gone in recent years after the recession, um, there's been a tend toward a, a higher degree of rental properties, and, um, that's just the way the market has turned, so it's, you can't control it. So you, you're gonna need to account for it, and I'll get into how the plan accounts for that in a little bit. So, the next, um, category of land use is mixed use slash local commercial. So, this is, um, more a category, um, it would be commercial, um, businesses with really a localized market area that are, you know, your, your, and, and this includes a lot of your office-based uses and banks and, um, things like that. Also, mixed uses, so when I say mixed use, that could be not necessarily just a retail center, it might be a retail center with some office space in it. You might even have a single development that's, that's developed with some, um, maybe, um, second-floor lofts, maybe it's a separate apartment complex on the same side, that's really where a lot of development trend has been heading over the last decade or so, and it's becoming more and more common, particularly a mix of different types of commercial uses. But frequently you see that with a mix of some, um, residential component as well.
Hey, Scott, would the Southwestmore Fifty Third Park be a good mixed-use development site?
Yes. You'll see that when we look at the maps, that would be an excellent mixed-use development site. And, and in fact, um, yeah, I, I think the, either option that Jeff showed, and I don't have any particular preference myself, but I, I would agree with, with Jerry Jones' assessment, um, you know, in my experiences with a land use planner and assisting with developments, and, you know, PEC has worked with Jerry Jones for a number of years as well, so we're really familiar, um, with commercial development as well. That would, uh, be an excellent anchor, particularly, I think there would be a lot of demand to actually turn the back toward the arterial streets and, and face the development, so that almost becomes like, um, I, I, not really a town square feel, but almost, so that the focus of attention is where the activity is, and then, um, you know, there, maybe there'd be a second, uh, or at least a second, you know, it might be set up with two phases, towards faces arterial, but there's, there's spaces, um, that face the, um, the park area as well. So, it would play really well off of, off of one another, and, um, I, I think, once the park is in, that becomes a, a big draw to actually, as, as I think it was Mary said, it's been sitting there for ten years. Well, that could be the encouragement that, you know, starts to attract some attention.
You see a lot of that type of development in the new places in Kansas City.
Yes, yes. Larger cities in particular, where you've got a more concentrated population, um, people can park once and-
Yeah.
Shop several businesses, go to the bank, go to the pharmacy, drop off their dry cleaning, whatever, without having to drive all the time to do it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's very attractive. So, your general commercial is, uh, you know, you're, you're typically speaking, you're more intense commercial activities. This is where you might throw in more of the self-storage, uh, you know, automotive types of uses, and, you know, big box stores, store, um, and, businesses with more of a regional draw versus- more of a regional draw versus a local market area. Now, keep in mind, when we look at the maps, though, one thing to know is that, just because the map might say this would be an appropriate location for general commercial development, really, if it's a general commercial, if somebody said, "Hey, I want to do a mixed-use development, or I just wanted, I want to do a more of a local-oriented development," it would be appropriate for that. However, the opposite would not necessarily be true. You probably wouldn't want to steer clear of more of those larger, you know, more intense retail, where it's identified for mixed use or local commercial. And I'll explain to you why. I've got a map that kind of shows a lot of the reason behind that. Government institution, that's pretty self-explanatory. This is where churches, nonprofit organizations, and, you know, city or other nonprofit entities would go. Commerce park, I think you know that one, so we'll go there. And then, industry manufacturing, this is where your heavier, you know, manufacturing, assembly, production-type industrial could occur. And then, utility and infrastructure, you know, it's really hard to lay out future utility and infrastructure, because it's a support type of development, and it gets put where it's needed. So, you don't really put that on a map except where it exists already. Suffice it to say that, over time, as more of the community infills with development, there will be more utility infrastructure that goes along with it. Typically, that's going to be on a smaller scale, lift stations and things like that, water towers, types of things you typically see spread across the community. And in terms of intensity, this graph illustrates like the intensity uses. And really, what the key is, we're talking about the intensity, the level of activity that occurs on a property, the density at which it occurs, and the potential impacts to adjacent properties. So, what we try to do through land use planning is really maximize the compatibility in terms of intensity, and minimize potential negative impacts. So, in general terms, what you try to do, and it's not always possible based on the way development has occurred, but what we try to do is make sure that there's no more than two jumps between adjacent properties. That way, it's easier to mitigate any potential, you know. For example, you don't necessarily want, you don't want a manufacturing plant right next to a single-family neighborhood, because that's negative impact. So, you try to separate them so that they can coexist peacefully. And of course, we implement that through a variety of ways. You know, the comprehensive plan, which at some point, this would be folded into it if you, as you approve it, that lays the groundwork, it gets implemented with your zoning codes and your subdivision regulations, and whatever design standards you may have adopted, like landscape, which you discussed first thing. So, let's take a look at some of the trends that led us to the plan before we covered, and I cannot read that.
Do you have a look at mine here?
May I?
Go right ahead.
The detail loss, I'll tell you a quick story on that. So, the file was too big, I tried to send it to Ty and bounce back, because the file size was too big, so I had to reduce it. So, I lost some of my graphic quality when we did that, so I'm glad you were able to see it pretty well once it printed, though. So, a couple of things I wanted to point out here, slide five. So, if you'll take a look at the table, what you see is, Bel Air is really adding population a little bit quicker than a lot of the other local communities, at a quicker rate than the state, a quicker rate than the MSA, which the MSA is basically, it's just the region around Wichita that is strongly influenced by Wichita's economy and population. So, it's identified by the US Census Bureau.
Ted, we were actually just certified, just a couple of weeks ago, that we had the highest growth of any city in Sedgwick County in 2016, and, you know, we've now surpassed Park City and Valley Center in population, so.
Yeah, and as I've done, and this is based on linear estimates. So, it sounds like your population, based on the actual census estimate, which I didn't have when I prepared all this, may be a little bit higher than what my mathematical estimate is. But even with my mathematical estimate, which, this is a conservative number, because what it does not take into account, if you look at the building permits that have been pulled in the last, well, I pulled the numbers on building permits since 2000, and really, there was a sharp increase in residential permit activity from 2013 to present. So, just looking at the mathematical projection, that doesn't count for that. So, this is a pretty conservative estimate, and even with this conservative estimate, if you look back at 2000, you know, out of the cities there, you were ranked number four in terms of population. Same goes, same is true for 2010. But today, you jump two spots over Valley Center and Park City.
Can I ask you a question?
Please do.
I don't think these figures are correct.
Which one?
The census for 2000, because we became a second-class city before 2000.
This is, these are the numbers that I got from the census.
And then, the population in 2010, and then you jump over to 2017, that one might be close, but that's what you got, I guess that's what you got.
I don't think we became, I think I was on council when we became city of second-class. Weren't you the manager then?
No, it was done before I got here.
I don't think you were.
Really, I thought.
I thought it was before you came on.
So, I thought it was like, you know, five.
Well, looking at 2017 and the future.
Yeah, yeah, so, like I said, this is a linear estimate, so it's pretty conservative, but if you take a look at it, and it sounds like the actual numbers may be a little higher than what my estimates were, based on what Mary just said. But, if you take that linear and you follow it through to 2035, by 2035, that projection is about 10,500, which, if the more recent trend over the last couple of years keeps up, I'd say it may even be higher than, you may hit 10,000 quicker. And I'll point out that 10,000 is a good target to have, because 10,000 is that magic number that a lot of national businesses look at in terms of, hey, this is, that's when you start getting the attention of a lot of the more national retail. So, if you can hit that 10,000 mark quicker than what just the linear projection calls for, that would then in turn, start sparking you some interest. Land development.
Oh yeah, no problem.
I can't see any of that, I can't see the numbers from here.
I was taught to share.
Well, I appreciate that. I should have thought I hadn't printed off my own copy, but I'll be seeing it on the screen.
Oh no, you brought it, you were right.
So, there's not too much to point out here, but there's a couple of things that I would point out. First off, the map's at the parcel level, so you see a lot of little shapes. So, in other words, it's colored by individual property. So, if you, on the north, there's this big brown, which is pre-1960, that's, that's two, there's probably just one house on two, oh, thank you, there was probably just one house on a big piece of property, so don't let that throw you off. But, you can tell, just by looking at the map, the pattern of how Bel Air developed over time, and it tells that story really well. Now, this doesn't break it down into types of development, the map doesn't. So, what I've done is break it down into the types of development on the top graph on the left, which basically says during each decade, in this, well, I lumped everything before 1960 into one, because there was not much development in the area prior to 1960. So, pre-1960, if you'll notice, there was, you know, less than 120 acres that were developed in what is now the city limits. Which, I should point out, we did not look outside of the city limits for this, and we did not set up, kept it within city limits, so that we had good, solid numbers to go off of, in terms of acreage and population and whatnot, so. And then, if you look at the bottom one, that's absorption, which that breaks it down, that's how many acres were developed by type each year, on average. So, for example, the little numbers above the graph, each of those show pre-1960, that was approximately 11.9 acres per year. That's 10 years, by the way, not since BC 20,000 or whatever. We're in the 60s, you know, almost 10 acres and so forth. So, the one thing you want to point out there is, look at that number on the bottom graph for the 2010s. So, since 2010, you've been developing at a rate of almost 50 acres per year. So, that, what these numbers tell me is that, not only is Bel Air growing at a relatively quicker pace than a lot of your peer communities, but you really recovered from the recession very strongly relative to a lot of communities, and you positioned yourself well, I would say, with the Commerce Park and a lot of what you've done in the past. And it's paid dividends since 2010 in terms of the development that's going on in the community. And, the point is, if you continue to plan in the way you have in the past, you'll maintain that status of being well-positioned for growth. Because one thing developers don't like, and you've heard a lot about this on the news with the healthcare arguments going on, you know, the insurance markets need stability, they, you know, same with land use. They like to have stability, they like to understand how the community's going to develop, and that takes out the uncertainty with whether or not it's worth investing in the community or not. So, if we take a look at the next one, this is existing land use. Now, keep in mind, this is 2016, so there's probably a few things that are a little bit different, and I know there, I know there are some things that are different, or at least that are in the process of being developed. But this is based on the 2016 data from Sedgwick County Appraisers Office. So, if you look, the light gray, that's all undeveloped properties. Agriculture, obviously, undeveloped, but used for some sort of agricultural purpose, according to the Appraisers Office. Park open space, once again, let me remind you, that also includes drainage. You can see that quite a bit of the community, particularly on the southwest side, is single-family, suburban-density residential. But you'll notice, as you move toward the northeast, more of that lighter orange shows up on the map, and it shows that change in density over time as the development pattern has changed. And by and large, once again, that's a marker, generally speaking. There's, it's a change in the size of housing, the style of housing, the size of lots over time. And then, of course, residential multifamily, you don't have a lot of multifamily, that may be an opportunity for future growth. So, I've broken down, in existing, since we have a lot of hard data, and we know what exactly is on an individual property, we're able to break it down a bit farther than at the high level. So, we've broken down commercial into office, retail, and storage. Commercial storage would be like self-storage units. And then, the institutional uses, I've broken down also into medical facility, church or school, and then a government facility. Industrial uses, so I've just, even what's in the Commerce Park, I've just classified under the existing land use map as industrial. And then, there's a few of the utility, infrastructure uses, primarily, you'll see those where the water towers are located, and not a whole lot else. Although, there's an electric substation, I know, that's colored that way, et cetera.
It's very interesting.
And, you know, you can kind of see the correlation, I know it's on opposite pages, but you can almost see the correlation between that, the development by decade map. You can tell how it has progressed over time. So, when we look at the breakdown, so, the set of graphs on the left side, so, it's the land use mix. So, the pie chart on the left is, out of all your acreage in the city, that's representative of how much of that acreage is made up with each of the individual land uses. So, as you can see, what we're looking at is 30% vacant, which that means a lot that's buildable, but there's nothing built on it. Normally, that's a platted lot also. Agricultural space is, and this is within the city limits, remember. You don't plan for agricultural uses, you plan for them to go away, when it's in the city limits.
Always on them that way, yep.
Yeah. So, in other words, what this chart really tells you is, half of your city limits is developable land. I did break down, then, institutional uses and residential land uses, so you can kind of get a flavor for how that shakes out. Out of the institutional uses, which are a total of 7% of the land area in Bel Air, but 83% of that, or 84% about, is actually churches and schools. And then, a smaller percent, you know, 16% or so is government and medical facilities. And then, if you look at your residential breakdown, that's where you really get a picture of what the community's like. It's by and large suburban density, out of all of the land use, which is 20% of the land, is residential uses, but 90% of that is single-family suburban-density residential. So, if you look on the right, though, now, this gets out to your breakdown of your actual developed properties. So, you'll notice there's no agricultural land in there, and there's no undeveloped land. This is, this percentage is based on amount of property that's actually developed. So, out of all the property that's developed, over half of it's residential property. I wanted to point out a couple of things about here, because I want to point out that you've got a little bit of an imbalance when it comes to what you typically see in a community. Part of that has to do with your proximity to Wichita, and shopping and whatnot that's available, because your proportion of development that is commercial is very low compared to a lot of other communities right now. And on the flip side, the proportion of property that's developed with institutional uses is about double what would be typically, according to, I looked up some statistics, according to Urban Land Institute, most communities, suburban communities, by the way, are somewhere in the 10% range, ranges from about 8% to about 12%. And this is kind of important for one reason, because institutional properties are not revenue generating. But, commercial properties are. So, we've got a little bit of an imbalance here that could, that, now, based on the numbers, what I'll say, on the population numbers, what I'll say is, your resident, or your commercial development is going to pick up. Your underserved with Your underserved with commercial right now, it's going to pick up, particularly given the fact that you've got one of the higher median incomes as a community in the whole metropolitan area, over $80,000 per year, your median income. So there's a lot of expendable income in the community. So, while there's an adage, you know, the old adage, you know, retail falls rooftops, part of that equation is also expendable income. And that can offset some of the, what the raw numbers of population can offset to some degree. So over time, I do suspect you'll see a much stronger development market for commercial. It's hard to plan ahead for institutional uses, because once again, those are something that they can go in almost any zoning district, so, but generally speaking, they, depending on what kind it is, they can have more impacts. For example, a lot of places allowing their zoning code, a church would be allowed in a residential neighborhood. And that's great. But you have to realize that there's also some negative uses, such as the parking and traffic that goes along with it. And as long as that can coexist and be designed, this site can be designed to coexist with it, wonderful. So I'm not saying it's good or bad, either way, just recognizing that there's really no way to plan it out because they can go anywhere, typically, generally speaking. But, and they're hard to control because there are a lot of, one particular piece of legislation that affects land use planning, you may have heard of, it's the, we call it RLOPA, RLOPA? It's Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of, I don't remember what it is. But essentially, you can't treat institutional uses any differently than you can any other. You know, you can't hold them to a higher standard than you would any other use that has the same level of impact as the gist of it. So, you know, it's going to be difficult to necessarily put a cap on that. But I will say this, one of the things is, that a lot of that acreage that's developed for institutional uses is really centered around the, you know, the Catholic Care Center and all. So, that's a big chunk of it. And then you've got, you know, the high school, that's a big piece of land. So, I suspect you'll see that naturally go down a little bit.
I just want to make this statement, that when we had our open house, I actually had a resident come up to me and say that people were noticing how much land we have in Bel Air that's non-taxpaying land. A lot of our space is taken up by institutions that aren't paying taxes. And they were kind of complaining about it to me. So that has not gone unnoticed by some of our residents.
Yeah, you do, as I've said, you do have an imbalance, and it's something that definitely, you know, impacts, because institutional uses, they still use city services. I mean, they provide other benefits to the community.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, I'm not going to say they don't, but, as a land use planner, I just need to point out to you that this is one thing that would lessen your overall tax burden over time, is for a smaller proportion of the properties being institutional.
I'd say, and like you said, and what we're all kind of, you know, hoping, working towards, is that 3% commercial grows, you know, the 19% decreases.
Yes, yes.
And that's, yeah.
I believe that's what will happen.
That would be nice.
Because much of what is developable, as I mentioned, is already platted, and most of that is single-family residential, other than the vacant properties on the north side of town. So there's not really much more opportunity for a lot of institutional land uses to go.
You have a lot of land.
Yeah. But, we're not planning for that to be institutional, so hopefully that's where the commercial development will go.
People like the Resurrection School and Centurions and things like that, they bring people into town. I mean, I know from just talking to the community, there are so many people that move here for those schools.
Yes.
So, that's helped our growth.
Yeah, as I said, there are good things. They do. But they just don't, you know, generate the revenue that other properties do. Yeah, absolutely, there's other benefits. So if we go, let me remember, flip it. So if we look at the chart here real quick, what I wanted to show is that, okay, where we start off and we create a plan is figure out, okay, this is our density of development. So what I've done is acres per capita. I could have done it in square feet, it would have been whole numbers instead of decimals, but it gets to the same point. And it shows the density at which property is developed, per person in the community, per population. What I did is extrapolate that out to the year 2035, based on the estimated population, and that's for developed properties. So what I did was take a look at the rate for your park and open spaces, the rate for the residential uses, and the rate for the commercial uses and institutional and industrial uses. And I took whatever additional was out of agricultural and undeveloped properties at the same proportion they are to one another today. Okay? So they came out of it proportionally. So, while overall, your density goes down, which is a good thing, the more people, you can serve people more efficiently, the denser the population is. But, your land use mix is still imbalanced, which means that over time, you know, you come across, as your population grows, you're maintaining basically the same degree of institutional properties, the same level of commercial properties, etc. So, we don't really want that as a target, because like I mentioned, you're overserved with institutional uses and underserved with commercial uses, and to be honest with you, underserved with industrial uses. And so what we're trying to do is get you more, we took a look at different land use scenarios for the future. One that was a residential focus, which would be typically, we're going to be a bedroom community from now until whenever. I looked at a jobs focus that was, okay, let's focus on getting more industry and commercial here. And that job focus is also service, goods and services as well. And then I did balanced, which, the balanced one actually is the preferred one, because I think, we've met a number of times with staff and with your, with Marlin and with Jerry, and we feel it strikes a really good balance for you, and it's a good target to shoot for. So, if we look at the next map, what this is, I told you there are certain things that drive the placement, and these are these development factors, and primarily it's related to utilities and transportation. So, you know, it's about access and it's about service. And then, there's this environmental factor in there as well, which is 100-year flood plane, which that impacts development and where it can occur, or can at least easily and efficiently occur. I mean, you can engineer your way out of it to some degree, but nonetheless, it really influences development. This is the bulk of it. The other factor, as I mentioned, is that land use intensity and where a property would be located relative to the type of development that's next to it. Okay? So those are the primary factors, and I will include them in great detail. But, so in looking at the alternatives, the housing focus that we're looking at, so let's just look at the maps first, and then I've broken them down by percentages in the table. You'll see a lot more of the light yellow, which is the residential suburban density. You'll see a little bit more of the residential median density, which there's already development in progress on that, so I completed that. And then we lined out some other new spaces where it could potentially occur. And then we made, we kept, we, like I said, this is the housing focus, so we're utilizing less of the property on this alternative for commercial uses and industrial uses, with the exception of the Commerce Park. And then if you look at that, and if you open it up and kind of compare that to the next one, which is the jobs focus alternative, what you see is a lot more commercial and a lot more industrial and a lot less residential. Although, I will say, we did use a higher proportion of multifamily with this one, because with the, you would need the housing to be, let's write, affordable for people who will be working at the commercial businesses, right? And if you're more commercial, a lot of that's going to tend to be some lower-paying jobs, so you would need to provide local housing for, that's more affordable. Whereas with the housing focus, people aren't necessarily working in Bel Air, they may be commuting back and forth to Wichita or wherever, and, you know, not so much of that affordability is an issue. And then, flipping over to the preferred scenario, if you look at the colors in the background, you see a lot better balance. You'll see industrial, and I've kept that on east side of the community, to where less impact on housing. We focused the commercial development and the mixed-use commercial development along the arterials, particularly at arterial intersections. And then, we've interspersed the residential with a fairly balanced mix, increasing the rate of medium density and multifamily slightly to account, you know, a little bit more than slightly on the medium density, I would say, just slightly on the multifamily. But, most of the newer developed areas, particularly east of Rock, would be more of the medium density. Once again, that's the trend that's been occurring over the last few years here, but that's also been a trend, you know, a general market trend in terms of residential development as well. What we've also shown here, though, is some future park service areas. And what this is based on is, generally speaking, to have all of your population within a quarter-mile of a park. So if you did that at some point, that's what these circles would be. So that's not saying, hey, we got to get after it right away. That's saying, what the plan actually says is that as the property develops, you might, maybe the developer, maybe we'd get some land dedicated from the developer for future park. But, in order to maintain roughly that quarter-mile distance, which generally speaking, most of the population is served within a quarter-mile of a park right now, Bel Air's done a really good job with that over the years. But that would basically, that would help maintain the existing pattern of park development as newer housing comes online. And the other thing I pointed out, too, is that if you look at the black diagonal hash mark, is that, so, we've got in the base plan that a large portion of that is called out for residential medium density. However, in order to make sure that you've got a little bit of flexibility since that, A, you've had good looks at that property previously, and B, it's a long K254, which is really the next best commercial corridor in the Wichita area to develop. That gives you a little bit more flexibility in terms of if somebody wants to propose something that's really, you know, a large-scale development, hey, let's eat into some of that medium-density residential space, because this development's going to be significant for our community. So the way it breaks down is in the table. And, you can just, if you look at the alternative one and alternative two, you can just see what the imbalance is and how that would remain true. But if you look at the preferred, it's more balanced, while overall, for example, the residential property, you know, it's only 1% more of the city limits, that mix is different. And that's following, like I said, the recent development trends. We're, rather than focusing on the jobs, which would, you know, give you that high degrees, sorry about that, thank you. Rather than focusing on jobs, which give you a higher degree of commercial development and industrial development, it's mixed. So, 10% commercial in the preferred, in the balanced focus versus almost 20% with the jobs focus, which, the market's not going to bear that, okay? 10%, I think, is really doable. And then, your industrial property, a little bit higher, obviously, than the alternative, than the housing-focused alternative, which can find future industrial primarily to the Commerce Park. Where we provide a little more opportunity on the east side of town with the preferred And then, and by the way, let me also point out, I reminder that this, we don't plan for undeveloped or vacant property, and we don't plan for agricultural properties. So that would be, this would be if, at full buildout. This is what proportions this would be. And then, recommendations, so, the next page, oop, wrong one. This one primarily would apply to the city owner-controlled properties, which is a pretty fair proportion of the developable properties, primarily due to the Commerce Park, but you do have, either own or have some interest, maybe an option or something, on other properties that are developable. So, for the primary recommendations in terms of future development, for the mixed-use and local commercial development, avoid self-storage units on these properties, these are not appropriate locations for self-storage units, steer base towards ones that are appropriate for general commercial. Promote high-quality design. I suggest, and I'm, this is the last piece of the plan that I don't have, that I'm still working on, because I wanted, before I got too deep into the, you know, drawing things up and, you know, drawing diagrams and giving examples, showing graphic examples, I wanted to make sure that I got your direction and that of the planning commission before we got too deep into that. So that's, this is the last thing that I need to get done on the plan. So, promote high-quality design. I would suggest that you put some sort of minimum masonry requirement on it. Most of your non, well, to be frankly, most of your residential properties also have a pretty fair portion of the facade covered with masonry, I think. Some sort of design requirement for that would be, keeping with your community character, at least within the mixed-use local commercial land use area. And I would also suggest maybe some enhanced landscape requirements for those properties, really beautify them, really make those community assets, and that'll help, not only, I mean, because, I mean, think about that, if it's going to be, for example, the property around the park we spoke about earlier, that enhanced landscape would really complement that really well. And that doesn't mean you have to go overboard. I'm not talking about driving yourself, pricing yourself out of the market. But just something that maintains a little bit higher quality to make the developments in the future distinctive and to maintain the character of the community. And, we would also recommend that on, within individual developments and developments that are adjacent to one another, encourage some sort of cohesive development. I'm not saying be cookie cutter, just make sure it doesn't look out of place. So, you know, and the way you would do that is primarily by having a palette of different materials that you can select from. In other words, you know, you don't want metal buildings, for example, on one of these lots.
You know, you would want a strictly.
Not, I'm not saying dictate the architecture. Not, I'm not saying dictate the architectural style. I'm saying give them a range of, of materials to work with. That way it looks cohesive, even if the architectural style's very. For the general commercial development, be sure that you're maintaining, you know, the setbacks and that you're not deviating from that and screening requirements to minimize negative impacts. You know, there's a few commercial uses in particular that have negative impacts, a lot of the automotive uses, car washes, garages, maintenance garages, those sorts of things. Only allow the, don't allow general commercial to access, to have their primary access off of anything other than an arterial way, okay? That'll keep, keep that traffic out of residential street areas. That'll keep that traffic from, from streets that can't handle the traffic. Promote the frontage road development along K-254. Yeah, I, I really think, you know, as K-254 starts drawing interest from development, obviously there's, you know, in light of recent history, it's drawing interest, it's just not quite there yet. But that'll be the place to promote some general commercial development. The question is, what's the access? And what I would suggest is figuring out some way to extend a frontage road from Web over to Rock, but making the primary interest off of Web because it's, it's highly likely that would be, if KDOT does grade separated interchange in the future, it would be Web, not Rock because Rock doesn't, Rock's too close for their spacing standards. Rock is only one mile away. Their general standard is two miles between grade separated interchange. It's going to be Web.
Besides that, I'd have to go through Williston.
I shall say, you're not going to go through Williston.
That's another thing that I don't like about, I know, you know, developers would like to see Rock, but you don't want that traffic going through residential neighborhoods. It's, Rock has not developed as a commercial corridor through Bel Air.
I think Williston was designed to.
They did that to stop it.
Yeah, exactly. So Web makes more sense, but the problem with, with Web right now, if you just look back at the map, is that you've got an area that's outside of city limits that you have to, you know, traverse somehow. So, you know, in the interim, if you could get some frontage from KDOT to build a frontage road or from one of those adjacent property owners to extend a frontage road through, that would be ideal and that would set the stage. Because I suggest that it's highly likely at some point, that would set the stage for those properties to, A, come into the city limits and B, develop as commercial. Because that's going to, at some point, be prime real estate. All commercials, like I said, it's not the character to allow metal buildings for commercial development. Do not, don't let it happen. You're gonna, going forward, I'm not saying get rid of the ones that exist. They exist, they're viable businesses. Just don't, don't let any of what's happened because it's out of character with your community. And to the degree that you can encourage, you know, multi-lot, multi-tenant development, such as the mixed-use development, do encourage that because that's where you get a lot of momentum on the development side of things. Plus you have tighter control over the type of development that occurs. Commerce park, just really keep the larger lots intact. That way you, you know, if you get a big fish on the line, you can reelement. If you let somebody talk to you, I really want to be there, I want to, I want to subdivide that lot, and you let them talk it into, talk you into it, you've really, you know, positioned yourself out of that opportunity in the future. Keep your larger lots intact, steer the smaller development toward, toward the smaller lots. And, you know, really avoid the dirty industry. I don't think I have to tell you guys that, I don't think you're trying any of this, but.
We already turned some down.
Yeah. Just be sure not to cave. Future, future parks, just develop that along with new housing according to the, the demand. And then implement your standards, there's a couple of different tools you can use. You can use planning to development, you can use overlay districts, but on the properties the city owns or has, you know, some sort of ownership interest in, you can do that with development agreements that dictate, hey, if you're, if we're going to sell this to you, you're going to develop it to our high, high level standard. And that can be done with a development agreement or restricted covenant that goes along with it. And then finally, just a couple of implementation things. You make the plan, so stick with it. Be flexible, because this is appropriate, what the map shows is not strict boundaries where things can go, but it's the appropriate locations for different types of land uses based on the spec we discussed, okay? They're not strict lines, but it's a general guide. Continue to diversify your, your housing options. You're going to need that to fill in the rest of the developable lots. That would be a mix of price points, a mix of two-family, multifamily, along with your single family. And then opportunities for ownership and rentals so that you can be able to provide the type of housing that's going to be, that is in demand and that's going in demand. And when it comes to rental particularly, point this out to you, the larger units are in demand. Three and four bedroom rental units are high demand and they're high rent. These are not the things people get stereotypically, you know, when you see the zoning case for multifamily and everybody's coming out of the woodworks to protest it. This is a different, the market today is different because these are people who could afford to buy a house, they just either choose not to or because of the stricter type of credit, you know, after recession, they can't. But they've got the expendable income and they would, they would still be good residents of the community. Promote entrepreneurship to encourage that local commercial development. Numerous ways you can do it, but entrepreneurship would help fill in some of that local commercial property while growing homegrown businesses in Bel Air. Focus on nodal versus strip development. What I mean by that, focus commercial development toward the intersections, not along a whole mile. It's easier to serve, it's easier to control traffic. And then encourage mixed uses where appropriate. It gives more opportunities and you have to worry less about mitigating negative impacts if there's housing right on the development. That's the general outline of the plan and if you've got any guidance or direction for me, I would love to hear.
Well Scott, I just want to say thank you for putting all this together. This is a lot of information. I know you've been working a long time on this and, and we've said it many times, it's exciting that we're now able to look at where we're going to be, would you say, 20 years from now. This is exciting and I appreciate the recommendations and going through this, I'm planning to spend more time actually, going through and digesting it some more, but just looking at all that. And this also shows that a lot of what we're doing is the right thing too, that we have done the right things in the past and that some of the things that we're already looking at, we're taking the right avenues. As far as what you've talked about here, especially with the recommendations, we've heard about the gathering spots and the commercial and, and all of that. And I look forward to seeing commercial being more like 20%.
Yeah.
And that, so, but I do appreciate all this work and it's just great to have this master plan to, to. Do any council members have any questions or comments?
My point out to you will be presented to planning commission on Thursday and getting their impact input. So feel free to channel any comments. Well, you, you might just wait till I, after I get that input and I get the draft fully together, so I've got all those implementations finalized and have the graphics that go along with it and explanations of everything, then we'll get your input and we'll take, I'm assuming we'll take it to a public meeting or public input as well?
Yeah, that would be the, what the council, you know, if you get it to where you want and then we can get it out to community.
Yep, and then we'll finalize the draft, get it through planning commission and back to you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
I would like to say, I really like your recommendations. These are a lot of things that I've hoped we would really go for, like the, the cohesive development styles, enhanced landscape requirements, this type of thing. When you go into a community that's been planned like this and has standards, you can see it. And people want to live there and they want to shop there and they want to have businesses there. So I think this is really good and I'm very pleased to see the work you've done on it. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's get on with your evening and we're going to move on to our committee's conversation. With that, would like to invite Danielle and Jeff to join us up here. And the, as they come forward, you know, we've had a lot of talk about the CDC bylaws and resolutions and, you know, certainly the purpose of this committee has been a bit fluid here recently. We've discussed that, we've discussed that at length about how the purpose has changed a bit and has changed a bit, just kind of like we here in the city council have changed. Five years ago, if you would have been told me, if you would have told me we'd be able to look at something like this and the park plan that we just looked at, I would have told you you're crazy. So, but we're all doing that. So having the chair and vice chair here, that way, I know we've had a lot of talk about that, that way they, we can have some conversation. They know sure, they know, you know, what's expected of them from the council and that way we can all be on the same page as, as we move forward as a community. The, also in your packet you see, and we heard from Gary at the very beginning of the meeting, the tree board bylaws, also in there are the bylaws and resolutions for the utility advisory committee. That, that way if you guys want to look at the bylaws and resolutions of other committees, this would probably be a good time. If you think maybe we need to look at one set of bylaws and then let each committee fill in their mission, we can do that. Just, again, just kind of have that conversation. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to the chairperson, Jeff Hons of the Community Development Committee to kind of talk a little bit, you want to kind of bring us up to date and?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk about a couple of issues real quick. I do, on behalf of myself and the committee, want to apologize for you not receiving the minutes. Had we known that there was an issue prior to the last workshop, we would have done everything we could to rectify that. And moving forward, we'll make sure that the minutes are delivered to you in one way or another, but we will make sure that you, you do have those. As far as the budget, I just want to say that the CDC does not have a $10,000 budget. You know, I know that the council last year voted to put $10,000 towards, you know, kind of Christmas issues and that's in economic development. I mean, all we do is advise and make recommendations to the community development specialist. As far as purchasing or anything, it's, it's beyond us. I mean, it's, we, you know, we don't write any checks, I don't have a checkbook or, or anything like that, so. A little update on flags for Woodlawn. Tristan, the community development specialist, has already contacted Westar to do a structural engineering report on the poles on Woodlawn. That has to be done before anything's put on them to make sure that whatever is put on them is safe for the poles. So I talked to her and she said that usually takes three to six weeks for Westar to actually get out there to approve things and so. And then, you know, it's unfortunate, Councilman McDonald's not here. I know he had said a few times that we are not doing what the council wants. I would, I would love to invite a more open communication. I would love to, you know, and I'm either, either going through Tristan or Mr. Lasher or myself, I'll provide my cell phone number or email and I would love to, to hear what you want us to discuss and bring up in, in the meetings. You know, if there's something that you want us to, I mean, I think all of us are more than open to, to doing that. I would love to hear that, so. That's kind of all the update I have.
I appreciate you two being here and appreciate everything that you guys do and again, like I said, not to beat a dead horse here, but just the fluidity of the, the committee and the importance of it. So let's, let's kind of find out, make sure that the committee knows what the council expects of them and the council knows what the committee is doing. So we're all on the same page. So I'd like to hear from council members, if you guys have suggestions, changes.
Was she wanting to speak first?
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Danielle.
Okay, thank you.
Well, in, in looking at the bylaws, these are like leftover from a forerunner is kind of what I'm seeing. I, I don't think that the Community Development Committee should have priority goals to be working on commerce and industrial park and housing and transportation because we have other people who are more qualified now as well. And so that's certainly, you know, one of the things that it kind of needs now, the quality of life, absolutely. Any good idea on quality of life is, you know, just should be discussed and, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can do it in this type of thing. And also taking out, and I was looking at like C and D collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and pursuing new businesses. Well, quite frankly, the Chamber of Commerce isn't doing that either. So that's another gap or another project for another day. But yeah, we, we aren't expecting you to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce particularly. I will tell you that one of the things back in the years when I was on there and you were also, we were hounded to put out a calendar. And you probably remember that as well as I do. I'm not so sure that's as important as it used to be because we do have some standardized things we've been doing. So the calendar would be more the specific date, the sooner you could get it, because we've been doing the hot dog pool party for several years now, four or five. And we do a spring and a fall thing. I'm just going to call them a thing. And so, you know, for my calendar, the quicker I know when it's going to be, the better. And I think everybody sitting here is probably that way. So it's a calendar, but it doesn't have to, you know, it's more the getting the dates set for them, you know, I mean, we've gone through that on the spring festival because if you choose it one year, then Easter falls on that weekend and then the next year Easter's a month away and, you know, that kind of stuff. So you kind of have to look at the calendar at some point in time, you know, to do that. And then I, I like number F, you know, finding funding sources or grants to identify, you know, community projects and that could be anything. We talked about the playful city a little while earlier and I know Rick was really big on that and we did get some things on that. The pool party, we always put something in, dog-related in a park or something. And a couple of things that are important to people in this community that came out of the surveys and some didn't, but we've talked about having a pride committee. And pride also opens up doors to grants and things like that. And then some of it, again, Park City has a very active pride committee. And then some of it, again, Park City has a very active pride committee, and the lady that Kyle runs it, it's about 90 years old. I mean, she puts me to shame, but, you know, she's got things going, and, you know, and they do things like a trivia night every once in a while, which is strictly for fun. And I'm sure with the, you know, the community room or something could be used for that. But the farmer's market and the community garden, and it's always been an issue. Somebody's got to grab it, and, you know, put together a startup plan, you know. Now that startup plan may, you know, go 50 yards in another direction, but that's where it starts. I mean, it starts with a plan, and, you know, and so those are things that have been important. And anybody else can butt in here at any point in time. The only other thing I was looking at was, and this is the way it was earlier too, but I remember we had the election of officers, and then they took, and it was like in the same meeting, and it was awkward, and most organizations kind of, you elect somebody for the next year, but they don't take office until the next month, or, you know, maybe two months, I don't know. I mean, for you guys to figure out, but that was always just really awkward.
Why can't they do it in January, like the state statute's making the council do it?
And that, again, jump in there, because...
I did.
You know, for some reason, this was, had July as the month for...
I think that years ago, that's when this was established.
Yeah, we had a lot of, a lot of terms that ended in July, too. And that's why, so...
See, it was June of 2013, and that's why they did it July.
Right, and elections were in April, and then people switched off.
And I apologize, I don't actually have a copy of these bylaws. All I was ever given is a resolution, which is basically, the resolution's been put into these bylaws. I can tell by the way it's written, so, you know, it's basically the same information. I mean, a little less, a little less to the resolution than there is in the bylaws, obviously, but...
And so we all actually have, so proposed bylaws, and the original one is that, just to make sure. Is it, am I correct in that?
Yep.
I don't have any proposals.
They're in the packet.
This is the one that, they...
The ones typed up that say this one.
They typed up and gave to us the...
This one?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. But, Mr. Mayor, we've never had a committee set their own bylaws before.
Go ahead.
And I just don't think that if we start it with this committee to set their own bylaws, we're going to have to let every committee that does this. And we have a lot of other volunteers that do other things. I think their bylaws could be taken into consideration, and just develop the new Community Development Advisory Committee, now that they kind of know the purpose and things that they were supposed to be doing. And that's what I was complaining about, because according to the resolution, supposedly, they weren't following any of these, but I can understand if they've never seen them. And by the way, I do thank you for all the minutes and everything, and I did read them, every one of them.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I don't think, we're not necessarily saying this is the new bylaws. It's just kind of taking what's said, and then we'll bring it here, and, yeah.
I mean, I think they can have input, but when they start telling the council, well, the mayor's going to do this, and then it goes back to the members, and the mayor, and confirmed by the city council, and then three consecutive meetings, the meeting just whenever they want to, they're supposed to meet every month.
Right, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I did make these, and basically use the old resolution as a guideline. And I, by no means am I saying, adopt these. I mean, I made these as kind of a starting off point, because I would love to hear the recommendations on these. I mean, if you look at the ones I made, the stuff with the Chamber of Commerce is all out, because that has nothing to do with what, you know. If you look at the purpose, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a volunteer committee whose purpose is betterment of Bel Air for the citizens of Bel Air. I mean, that's, that's section one on purpose. Two, is in coordination with the community development specialists, the committee shall help market the community through social media and other platforms, including but not limited to development or modifications of marketing materials. Three, in coordination with the community development specialists, the committee shall assist with planning and executing events to promote the Bel Air, to promote, I shouldn't say the Bel Air, but to promote Bel Air, and provide the citizens a better quality of life. Four, the committee shall study and discuss specific community development issues brought forth by the governing body, the community development specialists, or members of the committee. They shall present their conclusions and advice to the person or group bringing forth said issue. You know, I think that it still encompasses a lot, as far as, I mean, basically, I've taken the quality of life aspect, which I believe as far as the community development should be number one on our, on our list, and taken that. In this, you can also see that I do have in there that the meetings shall be, regular meetings of the committee shall be held on the third Thursday of each month.
Third Thursday?
Mm-hmm, third Thursday. I've switched, we've, I've talked to the rest of the committee already. I know that Tuesdays were an issue, so...
Good for you.
You've brought that to us, we'll change that. I mean, that's, that's why I would love a more open communication, because had we known that it was such an issue, we could have, you know, we had a discussion, said, does Wednesdays work? No, churches, and Mondays don't work, how about Thursdays? We can do that, so we've, we've changed that, we've put that in there. The one thing that I know that does bother me as far as amendments and other provisions, the, it's Article 8. I do have in there that these bylaws may be amended or replaced at any meeting of the committee by a two-thirds vote of those present in voting. Notice of any proposed change shall be contained in the notice of meeting. I do want to add in there that with approval from the governing body, because we can't just, they, you know, the committee can't just go and just change things without your approval. So, that's one thing that, after I had reread them, I was like, oh, that's not right, so.
Well, I just want to say, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I appreciate you taking the time to do these, and I, and I understand that you weren't doing them, and saying we had to do them, but to clear this, because you hadn't even seen it, obviously, but these are the ones that we have. And I also think I would welcome, if any other committee thinks that theirs need cleaned up, they could come to here and suggest, like the tree board guy did tonight. He came and said, hey, I'd like you to do this, and this, and this, and we listened, and it made sense. And, you know, we can take these home and look through them, and, you know, decide we want to merge stuff. But I appreciate the time you spent, because like you said, under this old one, this, like Diane, I think, said, that the housing, transportation infrastructure had nothing to do with them.
No.
Right, so, you know...
We've hired people to do it right now, it's kind of the same thing with Gary, when he stopped me.
Nice.
And told me that he was doing tree inspections.
I know.
What?
Yeah. I didn't know that, yeah.
Yeah, like I said at the beginning of this conversation, we thought we'd be here five years now, this is... I did want to jump in and say one thing that I would like to see added in here, because we've heard some talk about somehow saying that volunteering added at the events, or helping to find volunteers, I think that was something that, at least certainly something I heard from the governing body. Correct me if I'm wrong, but just making...
I had a question on that, actually. Because I know back in the past, there was some controversy about that, especially with like churches, and like situations of like different religions, and who could provide like the eggs? I remember that was being a situation of, you know, one church wanted to do the eggs here, and the other. And so it's, and there are volunteers and things like that. So, I mean, I just want to know to clear up, can we go to everyone in Bel Air? Like, you know, the schools and all the churches that are in Bel Air to be able to volunteer? That's, that was my big question, because I didn't understand that very well.
Well, the issue that we ran into, I think with the, one of the churches, they were getting leads. They were making people sign up and give information, and that's not acceptable. You know, we don't want our residents being used by children at events. And so that was the, that was the area of, you know, the rub, or controversy, you might say.
Just some of them can't participate at the events, but they can come volunteer. We've got to use people.
Yeah, and I don't want to discriminate against anybody, so, yeah.
And one of the rubs on the Easter egg hunt was...
A lot of people volunteered, and they didn't come.
The Lions Club had done it. And provided the candy for the...
That's what it was, that's what I'm thinking.
And it kind of got run over, roughshod, and I think that's kind of a smooth back now. But, yeah, feelings were pretty raw there for a while, because it was just like, no, I'm going to do it this way.
She said, well, you wanted to go home or something.
Whatever, and so, yeah, I was, you know, I was still on the committee at that point in time, and you may have seen a little dispute between me and another council member. I know Ramona did.
I know I did. I sit back in the corner shaking, that is awful.
So, so then that means we can get it from, and that's where I was confused on.
And, you know, again, being kind of back in the beginning, when you are at the beginning of something like that, you know, you're, you're paddling to figure out your, you know, what, what to do. But, you know, I mean, new events, I mean, the pool party had never been held. We'd had Easter egg hunt, but it was expanded, you know, just a lot of things like that. But one of the things that I remember trying to get going was, I mean, I've lived here a long time. When I first moved here, I knew everybody, my kids were still little, everybody knew my kids, sometimes good and sometimes not, you know, those kinds of things. But then all of a sudden, there was some controversy, and boy, everybody's door slammed shut. And my idea was to get it back to that openness that we used to have. Now, it'll never be like that, because there's, you know, way, way more houses out here now. But at least to get various communities getting together.
Like little block parties even, for them.
Yeah.
We were just actually talking about that in my neighborhood, because it's very distant from each other, really bad name.
My objection of the committee, you can get on the telephone so easy. Call the businesses, they'll give you donations, or you can ask them, say, donation or money to help us put on this egg hunt, or the Christmas thing.
And we have, we have sponsors for all the events.
And one thing I have in your park is the signs, I know that they're expensive, but they're not big enough to read when you're going down the road. Plus, they don't have a day on them or where it's at.
Right, and, yeah, and we, they did that on purpose just to...
What?
To be able to reuse them each year, add, add more and more, but, you know, we kind of started that, we kind of started that as a conversation point.
Like on a corner somewhere, or someplace...
And we have a portable sign.
Everybody can see it, or the portable sign.
And we kind of started that as a conversation point, too. I mean, we want people to ask us, what's the dog party? Because we want to be able to get in front of them and tell them. I mean, all of us have really tried to reach out to our neighbors in the last couple of months, and really talk to them, and let them know about the committee and what we do, and about the events. And I've had, you know, a neighbor that moved in less than a year ago, who had, they have a two-year-old and a brand-new baby, and they've been, they went to the Easter hunt, and just had a blast. I mean, he was in the little, the little kid's stroll area, and he was having more fun throwing eggs over his shoulder than gathering them, but, you know, just, just had a blast with it. So, you know, that's, that's one thing that we've really tried to stress amongst ourselves, is get out and talk to our neighbors, and make sure, first and foremost, they know. Because then, you know, maybe somebody down the block gets ahold of them and says, what is this? And they know what it is, and they can spread the word. So along with the social media, along with the letters in the monthly water bill, along with everything, we are trying to, we are trying to just, just generate as much communication about events with people. You know, I know at the open house, we had a sign-up sheet that, you know, we, I got five or six, four or five people signed up to volunteer that have asked to, you know, they would love to be part of it. I know, I think Mr. Lasher's wife is helping with the hot dog party next week, I saw her on the volunteer... Oh, your daughter, I'm sorry, I saw Lasher, and so, I didn't meet her, just your wife and son at the open house, but...
Do you have a dog?
So...
Dog, do you have a dog?
His daughter is helping out next week.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
That's why I wondered, did you have a dog to take?
And we completely, we completely understand, we need more volunteers, because it can't just be Tristan, it can't just be a couple of council members, it cannot be just the committee members. It has to be community involvement, and that's where we've, we've tried to come up with plans on going and talking to the high schools. I mean, we have two high schools here that, with especially juniors and seniors, you know, it's something they could put on a, on a, you know...
Resume.
On their, yeah, on their resume, on their college application.
Right.
Community service as volunteers, so...
You were someone called me, because my National Honor Society has helped it too of your, because I'm the advisor, has helped it too of the community events, and so, I mean, we're glad to do that. And I'm sure, I know the ones over at Northeast Magnet would too, because they need others.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just want to tell you guys, I've talked to most of the committee after you guys came, whatever it was, a couple of weeks ago, and just reassure them that we appreciate you guys, because I think they were feeling kind of like, man, we're, you know, we're not getting any good, you know, publicity, everyone thinks this, and, and I've talked to a lot of them, I haven't talked to all of them yet, but I just want to encourage you guys to stick with it, and thank you for what you do, and use the community, because that's what a couple of them said. We can't be at every single event, I get that, I can't either, I miss things, I mean, we all are so busy. But you shouldn't have to be at every single event, if you replace yourself with people.
Somebody else.
Exactly.
Well, he's president, he should just make a list and say, okay, folks, here's what it is. You're going to be chairman of this, you're going to be chairman of that.
Right, but you can't do every single, we should not expect them to be...
Yes, you can, I did it on Bellard days for 20 years.
Well, Tristan, our specialist, has stepped into that role, and she, she lets us know, this is how many volunteers we need, and then we can, we can sort it out between ourselves and get other people.
Right, this was an encouraged advice.
With the Hartland, they provide, you know, a lot of people to help with that. So there wasn't a whole lot needed, but, you know, obviously, after the last Spring Fest, we know, there's, but it's not just volunteers that we need, we know there's more activities needed. If we're going to have that many kids there, you know, we can't have one face painting line with everybody. So we know there's more needed, and that's, there's going to be growing pains with developing anything. It's just like with the, with the Christmas fest, trying to make it bigger and bigger. Danielle and I were talking before, and there's so much room just right outside. I mean, we can make that an all-day thing with, you know, somebody coming out with reindeer, live reindeer for the kids to bat.
Well, I think that, that would be great to see that happen.
There's so many more opportunities.
There's...
And then as these parks...
You should just go to Danielle's house and just send your...
As the park across from City Hall comes online, I mean, talk about a natural gathering place, four more things, like a movie night, I mean, right now, right now, who really wants to go sit in the weeds to watch a movie?
You know, we've used the lawn, front lawn of City Hall for one of our Easter egg hunts, and I think that was a fantastic event. There was real good attendance, and it was just wonderful. But the thing is, we can't do anything bigger and better unless we have plenty of people...
But the thing is, we can't do anything bigger and better unless we have plenty of people that are gonna show up.
Absolutely.
You know, and I'm so glad to see you guys all motivated now to really get this thing going. And I think that last event, like you say, was really kind of a wake-up call for us because Tristan was trying to do everything herself. And one person just can't do it all. It has to be a whole big group of people that are working on it. And, you know, I'm glad to see we're looking at these bylaws now. Because when these were originally written years ago, I was on the committee, it had a totally different purpose. This is when we had very few staff, we didn't have specialists working in any of these areas or consultants. It was just us doing the work. I mean, I think we even helped design the city logo, you know, our little committee. We helped get the website going real well.
I remember Ramona designing the flyer.
Yeah, we designed flyers, I mean, we were doing everything because there wasn't staff. But now, we've got staff to do those kinds of things. So I completely concur with everything the other council members have said here about changes to the bylaws. And I'm so glad they're finally being looked at.
Well, and I know you've said in the past, but you wanted us to look at the resolution.
Yes, I've been saying that for years.
And ever since, especially once I got, you know, elected as chairperson, I, I've, I've reviewed this thing ten times. And just to make sure, that's, you know, that's why I, I did deliver a quarterly report as the, as the resolution said. And, you know, I was doing things as the resolution said, but nowhere in the resolution did it actually say we could make changes or how changes could be made. So we didn't really approach that subject.
Well, you know, we used to look at the bylaws every year. That was one of our things that we did, and I don't, I guess it wasn't written down in there. But that's something, we reviewed them to see if we were doing everything we needed to do and things that we thought maybe could be added, we sent our suggestions into the governing body.
That might be something we need to ask every committee to do on an annual basis.
Yeah, because remember, we did that, we spent a lot of time on it, and we got nitpicky, you know?
Everything changes.
I have a question for you, Jeff, because I know Danielle a little bit, so I, I don't want to ask her because I know what her answer will be. Well, the mayor and I had a little discussion the last meeting. And I had mentioned having, you know, someone who wants to volunteer for a committee. And I use the word resume because I own a business, and so sometimes resume comes out better. But what, all I wanted was, sometimes the mayor says, hey, I had a call from someone and they want to volunteer. Well, that's okay, but I'd like to know the name, maybe where you live, your phone number, and why. And, and a prime example would be the, the young man that just joined the planning commission because I kind of balked, I'm giving him a little trash that says...
Take one and pass it, I'm gonna talk about this one later.
That says, you know, what's this guy, what's this guy's qualities for, for this? Because it was for the planning commission, so...
And that's one of the things that, that, you know, Elsora Winberg...
Would it have bothered you to send in something like...
No, no, and this is, I know this just got passed. You know, I, I have, I have no problem with, with, you know, describing myself to, to anybody. I mean, I, you know, I'm very proud of who I am, I, you know, I've, I've lived in Bel Air for a little over fifteen years now. I've got two children that are almost grown, one's, one's gonna be a freshman in college, one's gonna be a senior at Circle High School. You know, I, I've just always been active as far as anything with any job. I've always done, you know, more than what's needed for the job and, and wanted to do more with that job. So when there was an opening on this committee, I thought it was just a natural, you know, something to, to just do more for, you know, the community. That, right now, my wife's a realtor, I, I do mortgages, and we are huge cheerleaders of Bel Air. I mean, we, you know, we, anytime there's a house that opens up, my wife starts scrolling through her list of, of who she may have that could be able to purchase a home in Bel Air. A home just across the street just went up for, for sale. And we're trying to rack our brain, who do we really want to move in here? Because we want good people to move in. You know, we, we are very active as far as our neighborhood goes. We have block parties at least two times a year. I have a TV in my garage that, that we sit out and watch. We sit out, no, no, just my wife and I both, we sit out and watch the Royals game. And anytime the garage doors open, our neighbors know, they just come over and join us. We have extra chairs all the time for, for the neighbors coming. So we just, we are such huge advocates of this city that, that we just wanted to do more.
Well, but my point of, was being, if I, if I get that, you know, even in the packet or that kind of thing, I mean, I'll have a whole lot of time, but I can, you know, I can give you a call and say, hey, Jeff, tell me a little bit about yourself.
And I don't think anybody that is, is wanting to volunteer would be opposed to that. I, I really, I don't see why, why anybody would, so...
The mayor and I disagreed on that.
Well, the reason why we disagreed is because some people got vetted and some people didn't. So, you know, what we have, what we came up with was kind of, say, a one-sheet so that everybody gets the same things. I think that's where our disagreement was, Diane, was this person gets this and this person gets this, so, right.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean go back to, like, the tree board, most of, a lot of those members have been on there forever.
Their grandfather did.
So, you know, every, kind of what we came up with here and work with staff here, kind of coming up with just, again, so everybody has the same thing.
Right.
Again, so everybody has the same thing, you know, fill something out.
We already know.
You've still got Tuesday down.
We've already changed that.
Stress that up for Thursday.
Yeah, so, because I heard that, yeah, so...
Put that in the water packet.
Yeah, that's a good idea, there you go.
We could do that.
That'd be a great idea.
Maybe want a little bit of a cover sheet on wires, help everybody.
Online would be good.
Online, yes, something...
I think online.
I think in the water packet, because I'm telling you, there's people who watch Channel thirty-three.
Nobody reads hardly though.
Yeah, most people, people listen.
They all do online.
Because, yes, who calls me?
We still bring our check every, every, every month.
I have nobody that reads.
You still come see us? I do, I do.
Online.
How many utility bills do you send out every month?
Uh, probably five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, that's quite a few.
I don't think it'd be a big deal to do both.
They give them a water packet when they move in, I think, don't they still do that?
So, listen, does anybody have any suggestions, hate, love this?
I think that's a great idea, Susan changed that to Thursday.
Yeah, so, and, and what I've got, again, I'm glad we're having this conversation, is so far because, Jack, this will fall to you, to write up, to come before the governing body with the suggestions. You know, taking out B, C, and D, like Councilor Wim mentioned, exactly what Jeff just said. This committee, the Community Development Committee, in my eyes, in my mind, are the cheerleaders, they're the ambassadors. So I, I would like to have something, and there says something about volunteering. You know, one, one of the roles should be to volunteer and/or recruit, recruit your friends to volunteer. So you guys are the, you know, because that's one thing that really hasn't changed from the committee. The committee origins were to try to promote and bring people and sell. We still want that as a genesis of, of the committee so that, you know, you're bringing, because hopefully you're bringing in people from out of town and everything, so...
If you stick to this, you're gonna change under Article Eight meetings, because it says it only shall meet when called upon.
That's right.
Yeah, that's gone, that's gone, yeah.
I think the committee should...
Let me, let me ask this.
To the, um...
If they're changing it to the Thursday, is that going to conflict with the planning commission?
No, because they meet in that community, that...
They meet here at six.
The planning commission meets up here at six.
They meet the weekend between the second Thursday.
Yeah, the second.
Second Thursday.
And then they meet in that...
Well, yeah, I mean, again, we don't want to exclude...
It's downstairs?
Senior.
Yeah, we bounce between the community room and then the meeting room.
So they wouldn't have a problem with the meeting, even on the same night?
Well, again, part of our issue with them meeting on the same night is the council was, if somebody from the council wants to go to the, the committee meeting, we can't. Or if you need to come to a council meeting...
Yeah, but they're meeting on Thursday, so we can go back to the...
But my question was, did it conflict with the planning commission for that same reason?
Well, let me ask this, because we just...
But I don't think it does, if they...
Right, and we just talked, you know, so what we'll do is have the committee annually look at bylaws. I, I think maybe we ask all four of our committees annually, if we want to make it in January or whatever, that they should take a look at their bylaws and, again, affirm that they're meeting at the best time possible for maximum, maximum attendance. Because members will change, things will change as, you know, you just mentioned you have a senior in high school. You know, maybe when he was younger, Thursdays were the nights you're driving. Now he's a senior, he's driving himself, you know, so maybe that's something we just ask of all of our committees, what do you think?
I think that's a good idea. And I would like to say that I know some people thought Guy came out a little bit harsh because he was saying, let's just dissolve it. He wasn't talking against volunteers, he was just saying, look at all these things we're talking about changing in the bylaws. You know, with some people, when they look at this, they, they just think, well, let's start all over. And so I think it has served a good purpose to take a look at this, everything's gonna be better. We're gonna have really a newly energized committee, and so I think this is good. And every once in a while, you need to step back and take a look at things and change things that need to be changed and move forward, you know, because it's important. And so we all have our own way of doing things, and some people have different ideas than others, and we, we need to listen to everybody. But I think this has been a good process, and I think we're gonna get good results from it, so...
Well, I think the uproar caused this action to happen.
Exactly.
So let me ask this, if we, Jack, if you're comfortable, because we've heard from our tree board, we've heard from our Community Development Committee, and taken some of the things you've heard, and we can bring those bylaws to the council here, maybe not next, you know, but sometime very near future. And at the same time, why don't we reach out to our Utility Advisory Committee?
We're in here tonight.
And see if they want to also...
Yeah, they don't even have us for bylaws.
So that we need to have one for them.
Yeah.
I noticed that they have a resolution or something.
They need to go to the office and get information. Because I've read their minutes on the tablet, and there are several things in their minutes that aren't kosher.
I've noticed the same thing. Jeff, when were you elected as chairman?
February, I think it was, it was, it was basically when we, it was either January or February.
Do you want to change it to, because we never did say, do you want it?
We said we were gonna change it to January.
Well, yeah, but then we didn't, I know Betty, hang on. We didn't follow up, though, then you would take office in February, do you want to do that?
I think, I think that, that sounds fine, if, if they're voted in in January, they, they take office in February, yeah.
Because you said that was kind of...
Because he can be re-voted again. There is a term.
Yeah, I wouldn't say anything, I just was wanting to know anyone to put in to take office.
I think that, I think that makes the most sense, because obviously, the chairperson of the meeting in January is prepared, has the agenda and to lead that, and then if somebody else is elected, they would be prepared for the next meeting. So I think that makes the most sense, actually.
So it says nomination of officers, do you guys do that still, nominate? Or do you just say you drew the short stick, you...
They better nominate, because that's what's in their bylaws.
Did you do it in December then?
I don't remember when we did it.
Well, that's okay, I just wanted to get some talk about it.
I think it was, yeah, it was backed by, like, Farback, Denver, January.
Well, because it says here that, that they would do them when the elections are done, so I guess that night you would just say, I, I nominated and you vote.
Yeah, that's what we did the same day. It was literally the same night, that's hilarious, that's great, okay.
And then let me ask you...
That's why I called it very awkward.
It was a little, yeah.
Do we need a formal action to adopt, or is this just now we're doing it, right?
Yeah.
We can just do it.
Just change it to the third Tuesday on...
And I do think, you know, the committees themselves have to look at their members and their schedules and all this thing. But I do think we should avoid having that type of committee meeting on the same night as council.
Yeah, and then, like I said, when we found out that was such a major issue, I went to the other committee members and said, what, what can we do, what day works best? So, you know, that's, that's, like I said, I, I invite that open communication to really, you know, I mean, when it's, when, obviously if...
I think it had been...
And that, I, if I was asked, I'd give, I'd give, I'll give my phone number, my email address.
It had been communicated, but I think it just didn't trickle down to you guys.
Well, and, and that, that could be, that could be. And, and the fact that you weren't getting minutes to see that, we were talking about, like, Guy's issue of taking care of Woodlong with flags. I mean, that's been in the works for the last four months.
I have another question, there was something in those minutes about, you buy T-shirts for every function?
No, 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 we've, we've, we've been discussing, we've been discussing T-shirts as a marketing promotion for Bel Air with, like, a slogan of come home to Bel Air.
I like that.
Like, it's new marketing.
I don't like it. It was, it makes me...
Well, we've talked about having, having excellent, like, women's events, because obviously, they fit different. And, yeah, we've talked about having different ones. We haven't, we, yeah, different colors, we've talked about a lot of things, there's, one thing we've talked about is...
And I think our volunteer should wear them.
Some of our local businesses would be more responsible, put their name on the back and so to help recoup some of that cost. But, you know, selling them at the events for people, because I would, I, my, my whole thing is, I want to wear my Bel Air T-shirt and wish to.
Yeah, just like...
Because I believe Bel Air...
It gets comfortable.
You should have been on my committee line, trying to get Bel Air to become a city.
Yes, the Solos, you know, stuff, not the ones that just stand on...
But we've, we've kind, you know, we've kind of come up with the slogan, come home to Bel Air. And just, and we really want to play that up with, you know, even people shopping in, in Bel Air and, and maybe doing some social media things with that. And maybe we give away a, a T-shirt to somebody that's doing local shopping and post it on, on Twitter or Instagram or one of those.
How many followers do we have on Twitter now, for the city of Bel Air?
Hundred thousand.
I don't think so.
Tristan and I are good, but...
Four or five hundred, last time I saw it. And it seems like every time, somebody retweets, someone follows us. I mean, almost every day, someone new follows. Well, and just like that, that is something that we've pushed at each event in the open house. I made sure, I was letting everybody know, I said, make sure you follow the city on Twitter, on Facebook. And, and really to try to get that presence up even more, so they know about these things.
We need to really work on that, because even though we've got like four or five hundred now, that's still not, I mean, we have almost eight thousand people in town now. So we need to really market that as much as we can and get more people involved.
I just know in our neighborhood, we don't, what was that newspaper called? We don't even get it in my neighborhood.
The Bel Air Rees?
Yeah.
You don't get that? It's supposed to come in the mail.
We pay for you to get it.
Never received it ever.
What street do you live on?
Rock Springs.
You know, they may have missed your neighborhood, we need to talk to them about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've never...
They probably don't know there's new houses over there, you know, because those...
Go to the water department and tell her.
Yeah, they probably don't know.
And she sends it to the belly paper news, or I did when I was there. People would come in and say, well, I didn't get this paper you're talking about. And I said, well, what's your address? And I looked on the, the label chart, and they weren't at it. So I just called...
I bet none of your addresses, I've got all the...
So you guys are talking about...
Like, when they talk about...
I can't believe that.
I bet not a new house is given.
Because I talked to Rachel, she lives down the block, and she told me she didn't get it.
You guys are missing out on all the good stuff.
Oh, yeah, it's still on there.
Well, I think it's just the feed, it's just, it all stays on there.
And then Channel Seven doesn't work on weekends.
I never get what it tweets.
I get tired of Colin Tyne complaining, he get tired of hearing me.
Well, I'm glad we've had this discussion.
And I think everything you've said, I can incorporate it pretty easily into the original bylaws, incorporating some of those suggestions you've made and everything council said into the original bylaws to present for you all to review. But there is one point that seems to be a little unclear, and that's the, do we want them to choose, you want the committee to choose the meeting time so long as it's not on a Tuesday and leave it to them to say that it will be Thursday? I say that because I believe the tree board's bylaws allow them to choose the meeting time. And they, you know, we can... and they, you know, we can just put that exemption, or we can explicitly make it...
I think it should be a set time.
And we didn't let these guys choose.
We didn't let them choose.
So then we'll put, "The meeting shall be on Thursday," and they'll need to amend the bylaws to change it.
The utility advisory committee's always met.
We do the tree board switch there, because they always meet on the last Monday.
Okay, so we'll make it an affirmative meeting time in place, and if that needs to change over the year, they'll have to come back to council.
Yeah.
Because in January, when each committee looks at it, they decide that...
Okay, since the other committees do it that way, I think that's good.
All right, anything else on committees?
Well, the UCA bylaws, resolution.
Those were in there for you to review if you wanted to, but I think we, we just said we're gonna let them...
Yeah, we'll...
Kinda that way they can come back, the way the CDC and tree board...
Make sure that they got the bylaws.
Yep.
Yeah, they didn't have any, so we'll put some together and send them to them. I think they're actually coming to the next workshop to talk about something, so we can have them review their bylaws.
All right, anything else on committees?
Just ask, give that.
With that, we will excuse our guests, Danielle and Jeff, and thank you again for...
Let us know when you start getting...
Do you need a copy?
Take it, I've got, I've got...
We'll give you the...
This one's mine.
You'll come visit your meeting, see what you're doing.
Sounds good, we look forward to it.
As long as it's not like that one way too.
All right, let's move on to the budget. We have talked quite a bit about our budget, um, since, what, going back April? We kinda started the conversation and it's been published, so, um, at this point, if anybody has any changes, now would be the time, otherwise, I think we're ready to move forward with a pretty healthy budget.
We can also change it the next, correct?
We'll have to adopt it, uh, the next, next Thursday.
But before it's adopted, we can change.
Which is what we're doing now.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can change and then adopt at the same council meeting, but you won't have another workshop or anything.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you want to, if there's something you're thinking about changing, you know, we could discuss it, that way what's presented to you, you're okay to adopt.
Is this donations in here, is that our donation to public television on page three here?
No, it's not funded, um, the donation...
That was the donation.
I'll have to look at, yeah, that must have been.
Well, I think we should put that in there again.
Well, that's under the revenues.
That's, that's under, oh, yeah, you're under revenue, I'm sorry, yeah, there you are. The, the...
Because I did...
Television is under, um...
Expenditures.
Yeah, so I was looking at the wrong deal, too. I believe it's in the land department.
We're on the budget now.
Advertising and marketing, I believe.
What page? I don't have any.
Okay, so that's...
Page fifteen.
That would be where that would fall.
It was under the advertising and marketing, I believe.
Okay.
Part of the land, that's what we...
Is there an extra budget thing in that pack? Not that I don't want you looking over my shoulder. Thank you. I didn't get just my whole... Had a earmark somewhere, this one, that's not even on my hand anymore. Okay, tell me again.
On page fifteen.
No, I'm not telling you.
Sorry.
I'm getting tired of that.
Sure.
When, when you want to not lower the budget, but say you wanna take something out of water and put it in streets, can you do that, or does it have to be in water? Stay in water?
Yeah, that, that's, um, technically, you, you don't wanna do that, you're going to throw it, you would put it through the ju, water to the general fund and then general fund the streets, uh, is the route you'd wanna go. So technically, you could do that.
Because we've got, what have we got, fifty thousand budgeted as a transfer?
Uh-huh, to, uh, from the water to the street, or from...
Well, I was just using that as an example.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because...
You get a lot of budgetary laws using that, uh...
Okay, can you take something from the police department and put it in another department?
Yes, yes, you can move money wherever you want, you just don't wanna lower, lower the expenditures.
You can't lower, but you can move it.
You can move it, yeah.
Okay, in the general, uh, the police department, uh, my question is, uniforms and clothing is ten thousand.
What page are you on, Betty?
Nine. How many officers do we have? Nine, plus the chief?
No, we've got thirteen.
Thirteen total.
We just hired three.
And what they do is they budget, uh, well, and then they've got, uh, uh, the volunteers, the senior patrol, and...
And they get two shirts a year.
Yeah.
There, there's lots of things that...
They wear their own jeans.
Yeah, um, there's, there's lots of things that go in there. One year, we had three officer turnover, you have to buy all new, equip all new, everything for them, uh, because they can be different sizes and...
That's correct, but can't you sell the old uniforms to the company where they're buying them without the logos on them?
Actually, what they do is they keep them, and then when we have new officers, if there's a shirt or something that fits, they'll give it to the new officer.
Okay, so how many, how many pieces of item of clothing do they get out of ten thousand dollars? It seems like on the preparations, it's always every month they're getting clothing. Our maintenance guys that work in the ditches in the water, they don't even get that much.
Yeah, with the, well, with the maintenance workers, what we do is we pay, who's the company that does the cleaning?
Centos.
Centos, so they provide the jeans and the shirts, and then we just, there's a rental fee we pay every month to clean them and stuff. These, we actually buy them and, um, they, so each officer, typically the way the chief does it is, you know, we'll afford a five hundred dollars per officer or something, so that if they need a new shirt gets ripped or pants or something like that get torn or, or something, they can replace that, boots wear out. Um, and then like Ted says, if we get one or new, new, two new officers that we have to, we have to buy the, the bulletproof vest, the, um, the leather holsters for them and all that kinda stuff.
Don't they turn those in, though, if they resign or quit?
Yep, and again, if we've got somebody that we can use, um, that will fit that, we'll, we'll reuse it to them. So, yeah, um, so that's why it's there to cover that, you know, if we, if we would get lucky and wouldn't have to hire anybody, then they should have been ten thousand, it should be five thousand or something.
Vehicle equipment, lease and purchase, is this for a new vehicle again? The twenty-one, five eighty-four?
Twenty-one, five eighty-four, uh, let's see...
Page nine.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's, um, the last payment.
Page nine says recreation.
On page eight.
On page nine, I have police department.
She might have a different one, it's okay, it's, oh, page eight.
Sorry.
Um, the twenty-one, five eighty-four, a portion of that, I think eighteen hundred of that is for the, the last payment for the PD radios, and then the, the remaining of that is for the signs that say, that read your, um, say, "Slow down," you know, or that, uh, display your current speed that we're putting up. I, I believe it's to purchase two and then we'll have a grant, so maybe we'll have, uh, two, maybe two or three total, possibly four, depends on the grant, but it's to purchase those signs for safety that the chief is...
So it's not, they're not buying new vehicles?
They're not buying new vehicles.
Fifteen, community development expenses under salaries, you went from forty-eight thousand to fifty-one thousand, that's three thousand a year increase.
This is, uh, where you usually round up, um, in any type of situation to the nearest thousand. And twenty seven, and where that's where, um, there's some rounding up going on and I, I can round down to, uh, the current exact number, um, but usually you just round up in order to capture a lot of that.
In other words, you're not saying that somebody's gonna get three thousand dollars?
No, not even close, and, and you do that with all your personnel to the nearest thousands or so, so that, um, if you have some kind of transition or, um, um, some types of turnover, then budget, budget-wise, we don't have to keep coming back to and say, "Hey, we need to increase it by a thousand dollars, so let's go through all these steps." And that's why it's a planning document and to make sure, but...
Okay, the reimbursements on, uh, still page fifteen, you went from sixty-seven thousand to a hundred thousand. What are we reimbursing?
That's all your home incentives that we've been giving out, uh, and that's the actual cost, um, of what we've been doing. If you look in actual twenty sixteen, we spent ninety-six thousand dollars on, on the contracts for the home incentives.
When's that over?
It's already ended, uh, you can't sign up for it anymore, but we're still having to pay, pay out the homeowners that took advantage of it.
How much more of it do we have?
Twenty-twenty-one, I think, is the last payment.
And what happens is that we get, they pay their taxes, so we get it in on the revenue side, but they have to come in and prove to us they paid the taxes, and we're just reimbursing them the city portion, not anybody else's taxes. So that's why we have to show an out for our auditors, that we brought it in and we're sending it out. So it's not an extra cost, it's just lost revenue, basically.
What column would we see it in on income?
It'd be, it'd be property taxes, that one.
Pro, uh, appropriations, you have that whole list.
Yeah, no, I just...
And did you check with that, check with them to see who that one address went to? That Margaret Walker?
No, I haven't, I got that note now.
People call me, my last name is Walker, usually call me Margaret Walker.
Okay, and street repairs and materials is still forty thousand on page twenty-five? And, uh, and it's the same one.
So we should look on page twenty-four.
Twenty-five, twenty-five's actually right, I think.
Yeah, twenty-five, I've got street funding expenditures.
I had a blank page in there and I think she had one.
I got a blank page in here, too, I couldn't figure it out.
We're, we're tracking it.
That was why we're, that's why we're off.
We're off.
See, there it is.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, uh, there is one more, if I can find it.
Yeah, the street repair materials for forty thousand, that's for potholes and such.
But, yeah, salt for everything, we did, salting, salty, uh...
Are you down here?
Okay, do we have enough to cover, uh, water breaks and, uh, sewer backups or whatever that is? Sewer breaks?
Last year, that'd be a water fund, I'll flip to it real fast.
That we just found?
I believe last year we went a little over and we corrected that by increasing, um, that amount. Water system maintenance and repair.
What page are you on?
Uh, it's page nineteen on ours, probably twenty on yours, babe. I imagine, and I don't have the budgeted twenty sixteen, but, um, it's the bottom of the page there, water system maintenance and repairs. I imagine it's around thirty-five, thirty thousand in twenty sixteen, but we actually spent seventy-seven and we had a huge main break, uh, in twenty sixteen, but you still, in twenty eighteen, we, we chose to fund it at the seventy thousand level.
Are we still working to get rid of that line from Hillside on?
Yep.
What's the status?
What's the status on that?
Um, we, let's see, I've had con, uh, discussions with the city engineer for Wichita and they have agreed to take, um, those customers and will abandon the main from Oliver to past Hillside. I can't remember, it's one of those str, uh, streets off of, uh, Forty-Fifth. And then from that point...
They should do the hydraulic, because that line runs all the way.
Well, the problem is Wichita only wants to take to one subdivision, that they're out on, they're on the south side of the line, at the south side of the road, we're on the north side, and their line only goes to a certain road over there, so they don't wanna expand it any farther, so we're also talking to key, or, uh, Park City.
Park City, because I thought they were already doing two.
Yeah, so they're kind of over, so, so from that point, then over to the west, we're working with Park City, see if they'll take it.
I think Park City wants to take that, from what I've heard.
Um, yeah, it's, the, I think their concern is the age of the line, because it, that's the one that broke, we had eighteen foot that broke.
Fifteen, twenty years is ours.
Well, we've got it all fixed up for us now.
It broke under the bylaw.
Where's that?
On this line from last year?
Because, um, the, the break happened late in the year and, uh, and, and we already approved, had the budget approved.
That's where we had to call a contractor in, to fix one of them.
So that's why you jumped it back up?
That's why I jumped it back up for this year, and I think that's, uh, I came in at May last year, so...
No, that's okay, I'm just trying to think how much something like on Forty-Fifth and Rock, or no, Rock, um, out there would have cost to fix that the other night, like a bunch?
I'll, I'll, I'll let you know in two, three days.
Okay, you'll give me the bill.
I'll send you the bill.
Really?
Because it was five thirty until three o'clock in the next morning.
I saw a lot of fifteen-hour days on timesheets on Mondays.
I'd better pay, pay 'em good.
Yeah.
I'll throw that one in.
Yeah.
Okay, on my page eleven, salaries went from sixteen thousand five to four thousand, I mean forty thousand? That's a jump.
Page, uh, ten, I believe, senior center. So, this is where in twenty seventeen, we got, uh, we were planning to have a sixteen thousand dollar grant and it only afforded at part-time person, and when you get, um, and if, if we get, or I think it's, um, a good possibility we're not gonna get, um, the increase in funding for seniors, we'd have to have a full-time senior director. So that's the jump in increase, uh, in salary there.
What do you mean, we're not gonna get what?
It's still out there yet, we might not get allocated, uh, the increase in...
That's for the grant?
For the grant, exactly.
Okay, I'm talking about, uh, this forty thousand is part of the grant?
It, it, the grant requires us to employ a full-time senior center director.
I can see that, the jumping from sixteen five to forty thousand.
And, and that's something where, um, again, it's, it's rounded to the nearest thousands or so and, um, our senior director also does a lot of administrative duties as well.
Then she can be paid out of ministry.
And that's fine, and we can move that from there, um, this is kind of the last hour.
Aren't you gonna show the sixteen five in income out of this, so really it's only...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, right, yeah, because it's gonna show...
And that's how we did, how we've been doing it, and that's how I'll, I'll, um, it, it's kind of where, um, I, I haven't switched it back. If you want me to switch it back, we sure can, and not ex, not expect the revenue coming from Sedwick County, that's fine, I just didn't wanna make changes without the...
But we're gonna, we're still gonna get the thirty-five.
Uh, no, there's no, um, indication that we will.
But you're gonna get the sixteen five.
But we're gonna get the sixteen...
We're gonna get the sixteen five, they, I hope they got the thirty-five.
Exactly, that's what we...
I thought we got a letter and were told that we were gonna get thirty-five.
Well, we were told that, or that, let me back up, the, the Department of Aging people proposed that to the county for an additional seventy-five, eighty thousand, so that four, um, four different senior groups could get additional funds, but it wasn't included, that extra seventy-five thousand wasn't included in the twenty-eighteen budget. And so then some senior folks, including Jenny, went and talked to the commissioners about, you know, how important that was, but they decided not to put it in the budget, so the budget was approved, but they said they were gonna continue talking about it. So at this point, we're not getting it unless they, the commissioners decide that they'll change something by the end of the year.
That was on the grant, not the original money that we get from active aging.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yep.
We don't apply for that for a grant, but we never have in the past.
Well, they call it a...
They call it a grant, I, I think we're, terminology's different. They call it the active aging grant or whatever, and I think the same thing, we're talking, we're talking the same thing, calling it different things.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why we showed it in there, so that if, if we were to get the grant, then we could show in the budget that we included that money for the full-time person. So, and this is one of those things where if we don't get the money, then we don't, you know, that's just a reduction in, um, uh, revenues and then we won't spend it out of that, so it'll be a lower number on expenditure side.
Okay, I don't think I, I can't find anything else to bug you about.
Keep me on my toes, Betty.
I am.
We appointed her in charge of budget.
No, I wanna know what it's for, because I have to vote for it.
And, and again, if you guys, anybody has any questions or even wants to go over anything, I'm, I'm always here.
Are you gonna talk about... Um, are you gonna talk about, um, there's our agenda?
Yeah, the, the next-
You're gonna talk about the water next, okay, cause you've already got that in the budget, though, right, that three percent? Um, okay, that's probably, we'll talk about it, go ahead.
That's fine. Um, and the little memo I wrote, Ty, I think was basically Betty wanted to see all the rates throughout the years, and this is kind of what I, uh, when doing my research coming to Bel Air, how I kind of viewed it, and I'm sure you guys have different views, but pretty much in twenty thirteen, from a financial standpoint, both our utility funds were not looking good as far as revenue coming in, expenses going out. Um, so we did a study in twenty thirteen, and they said, "Hey, we need to analyze what our debt service is gonna be in the future, appropriate rate structure, anticipate operating expenses, um, capital outlay and replacements, inadequate cash reserves." The company came back with a recommendation, and we've carried that recommendation out for the last, uh, let's see here, twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen. Um, and on page two of this, I'm sorry, they're outnumbered, it's cardinal, send, um, page two is, uh, Betty, it's the one over there.
Should we all get a flyer?
Basically just showing, uh, pretty much where the rates were in twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, where we're at, we're project, or, uh, based on our two resolutions, it says it'll go automatically three percent a year, therefore, so, you know, that's kind of thereafter until you guys change.
Okay, you done?
Uh, no, no, one more thing, um, and kinda went over at last council meeting, as you know, we have a little bit of constraints with, the only revenues we have are what we charge for the service, we don't, can't sell water or anything like that, so that the water rate's very important, eighty percent of our water expenditures are for debt service and the cost of water, um, sewer, same thing on the revenue side, and seventy percent's for treatment and debt service. The two things that, uh, and on the last page, what I kind of said was positives, both water and sewer utilities have stable ending balances, and that's very important when you go to issue new debt for CCUA or anybody, and, uh, both water and sewer utilities can make all their debt payments annually. Those are the two positive things that came out, that we're at right now. I would say they hurt his concern without doing an overall study of needs and, and equipment needs and everything, and, and going forward. Uh, the sewer fund made its very first franchise fee payment, uh, which is fifty thousand dollars to the general fund. Most cities, that's automatic, a hundred thousand dollars to the general fund because of all the work Ty and myself does for the utilities, and covers a lot of different things. Um, sewer fund did it last year, water fund still hasn't done it since twenty twelve, cause we just, we have water main breaks and that money goes there. Um, we have no record of the water and sewer utilities ever contributing to the equipment reserve fund, uh, we buy a lot of things for the water and sewer utility, we don't, uh, we don't have any of those types of ability to transfer yet. Um, and then also, like I kind of said, future needs to upgrade, improve, uh, any kind of infrastructure, um, I imagine we'll, we'll get to that areas, but I just want you guys to jostle around with some of those areas of concern with, we're gonna discuss rates, um, and I don't know if we wanted to do this right now, we can discuss a little bit, but, uh, it's up, it's up to you guys, that's kind of my report on.
I don't wanna discuss rates.
Yeah.
I just wanted these to be sure that in twenty sixteen on the water, it dropped, uh, I'm, yeah.
Yep.
Dropped the three percent, back to the three percent of what we had before, and that the sewer, beginning in twenty eighteen, goes to three percent, and now it's right at five percent.
Yep, and I budgeted, I budgeted.
Not that anybody asked, but I, it's a resolution, and I just wanted to make sure that they were still, not that you're not doing your job.
No.
Well, that's good, you know, it, it really, um, helped Ted and honestly myself look at, you know, so how did things turn out, you know, this was something that was done back then, and did it help, did it not help, and it was really kind of interesting.
And we did have that loan paid off, right? That we borrowed the money for that?
Uh, well, for, oh, yes, the rate study?
Yeah, well, no, cause we had to borrow money for the, and I thought it was split between water and sewer, uh, because the sewer, the water was going in the hole when they took that five hundred thousand out of water before you came.
Uh, no.
Cause I had it billed up to five hundred thousand, and that other gentleman and the treasurer said they could do that, and I said, "You can't take money out of water and spend it for something else," but it was, uh-
Uh, I don't think that we ever paid it back, but-
Well, we got a loan because of the, that's why we had these raises going. I'm sure we had to pay that back.
Yeah, well, and the loans are for like CCUA debt, um, and some of the expenses that we had that, and the fact that our rates weren't high enough to cover what, um, our expenses were.
Well, with Wichita raising it, that's what really-
Yeah.
It was, uh, when Michelle was here, because I about flipped when they said the first year was gonna be six percent, and I said, "I don't wanna answer the phone."
Yeah, and I think, yeah, a lot of times when you do cross-fund accounting, you have to do loans, uh, to, to do that work.
It was some kind of loan that, that we had to do.
Yeah, it's inter-fund loan, I'm pretty sure, that's probably what you did, but I, I haven't looked at it, I, and we don't have any type of inter-fund loans on the books right now.
So it's all gone.
I imagine so, yeah. Uh, it's not in our books, so, inter-fund loan. But, uh, I know it's late, but if we do decide, I'd really highly recommend maybe get, I've sat through a day training on rate analysis and try to rate setting, it's very difficult. Wichita State has a good program that kind of shows you everything, what you need to account for when you set rates, but I would almost, uh, certainly if you guys feel the need or anything, I'd wanna do another study, or at least plan to budget for another study, because I trust my abilities, but I don't know if I trust it for everybody's waters, uh, but, um, but anyway, that's my two cents.
Well, we gotta keep the water and sewers low as possible, because that's how we're gonna sell this land.
That's right, that's right.
Cause people always, "How much of the sewer bills too?"
It'd be interesting to see how other communities deal with the infrastructure needs going forward.
Everybody's got issues.
I think we're, uh, set a, set something that, um, people are gonna probably have to follow pretty soon, and as far as rates go. I know we're a little high now, but I think they're gonna come up to us.
But at least we have two different sources of water we can draw from.
Which we found earlier this year was, when we had an issue, we were able to, uh, not lose a minute.
Yeah.
So, um-
Good job, Jessica.
I'm sorry, I'm done, I just had to, and we, we got audit all done, everything looks good, uh, we'll have that-
You over here for me to sign it, ready to go, is that what?
No, 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 I just, I'll walk out of here and forget, so I just wanna make sure you come over a little ahead of us.
Well, I'll tell you, with that, does anybody have anything else to bring up?
I moved the germ.
I just think we should thank the mayor for spending his night because on his birthday.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday.
Oh, and I forgot, I was reading the paper the other day, Thursday, a week ago, well, no, last Thursday, I think it was, Wednesday or Thursday, and I'm looking through this business section, I'm thinking, "Yeah, that girl looks familiar, it's our Jackie."
Oh, yeah.
She's now secretary of Channel Eight.
Yes, congratulations, that's wonderful.
And when she answered the phone when I called, she said, "Hello, Betty." And I said, "I'm not gonna chew you out of breakfast, I'm calling to congratulate you."
And that was nice, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Peggy, and, uh, yeah.
Great birthday.
Birthday I remember.